I would like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Cook, would you please certify closed session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certify to that the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Ms. Young, would you like to second that?
Okay, second it.
Thank you. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
I.
Dr. Beers. Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
I.
Ms. Zombi.
Hi. And then I would like to let the viewing public know that Mr. Kelly is on Zoom. He's in a secure location, so we don't see his video, but he has participated in the Zoom virtual school board meeting. Ms. Serza, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Zombi.
Here. Okay, moving on to item 3.2. Ms. Hummel, would you move to approve the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board certify and approve that all agenda items for the May 19th, 2020 meeting are necessary either to address the COVID-19 disaster or to assure the continuity of government and that the usual procedures cannot be implemented safely or practically, including amending this agenda by moving item 6.1 Master Scheduling Audit Report to 5.1 and moving 5.1 Citizens Comments to 6.1.
You, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers, would you second that, please?
I second that.
Thank you. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
I.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
I.
Mr. Dowell.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Ms. Zombi.
I. Moving on to item 4.1, Announcements in Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My announcements this evening are very brief. I just wanted to make families aware that plans are well underway for graduation for the class of 2020, and the class will be honored for their achievement. They will have the opportunity to walk across the stage. They will have the opportunity to wear their regalia, and it will be rather different from all of our regular graduation ceremonies. The reason we haven't announced today is we're working with some community partners to make this an event worth waiting for, and we're waiting final details prior to making a full graduation announcement. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. You will have more information and an invitation organized for the class of 2020 by the end of the day on Friday. Thank you. That's all for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. So now we are moving to the Master Scheduling Audit Report, and we're moving this here so that our guest presenter can share information and then can leave our meeting, and we are switching that with Citizens Comments, which tonight will total a little over an hour, so that was the reason for shuffling those two. So I will toss it back to you, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Dr. Nate Levinson, CEO of District Management Group, was joining us via Zoom to present the results of a detailed analysis of middle and high school schedules, associated staffing, and the use of instructional time. Dr. Levinson, a former superintendent and former board member, brings a unique perspective to his work with divisions. He has led efforts to improve equity and outcomes for students in nearly 200 districts across 28 states, and he has deep experience working with district leaders to build student-centered schedules. This evening, we welcome Dr. Levinson.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to join you. As a former board member, I have empathy for 50-some-odd minutes of public participation, and so greatly appreciate the rescheduling, but super excited to share at a very high level our findings as we looked at an aspect of public education that doesn't always get as much attention as I think it deserves, and that's schedules. Time is as precious as money, and how you use that time can have a very big impact on what you're able to offer your students and their level of achievement. I know you have a very full agenda tonight, so I'm going to spend about eight or nine minutes touching on some of the high points. Leave time for your questions, and I know you have the full report for you to peruse before or after tonight. So I think as we reviewed how time and staff are used in the middle schools and high schools, a couple really nice things stood out to us. First, I wanted to note how open-minded and forward-thinking the leadership was at both the school and the district level. Schedules are a funny thing, that people can take them very personally. Often, they have been around for quite a while. It's not uncommon when we do this work for people to be defensive or for people to be reluctant to think differently. At every turn, at every meeting, at every discussion, folks were just very open-minded, wanted to know what's worked elsewhere, wanted to think about what would make sense in your own division, but it was as an engaged group of leaders at both the school and the district level as we have come across in many, many of our engagement. So kudos to your team. Second thing to point out and really want to make sure this is heard by everybody, that many of the best practices that do exist out in the world of middle and high school scheduling already exist in your schedules. You're starting from a good place. The schedules that we saw had a number of the teaching learning best practices and a number of the fiscal best practices. I think when outside folks come in to take a look, too much time goes to what could be better, and there are always things in every organization and every schedule that could be better, but there's a lot that's good already. Student voice and choice being one point of already existing in a reasonable level. Some extra time intervention already exists. We'll talk more about that. And shared and part-time staff are also being utilized. So a number of strengths that are already there. There are three opportunities that I want to highlight tonight. Again, the report is much longer than that. I did ask Dr. Heron for the three-hour slot. She said no, so we're only going to talk about three things. The first, and I think the largest opportunity, is to reconsider the academic enrichment period. Academic enrichment period, I think probably intended as the name sounds, it's both academic and it's enrichment as it is used, and this came from teachers, it came from school-based leaders, it came from our own observations, it came from central office. It's really not that academic, and it's really not that enriching, but it is a big chunk of time. So one piece is by having the academic enrichment block, you are reducing the amount of time that is available for core instruction. One of the most important research findings, as people have studied the use of time, is a somewhat simple but somewhat overlooked finding that the more time you spend teaching a subject, assuming that the teaching is high quality, the more kids will learn. So if you start to treat every minute as precious, the academic enrichment period doesn't seem like those are precious minutes. I know when a number of staff shared with us and others that the feeling that, hey, but we need to do some intervention. We need to do something to help kids catch up, and you're right, and they're right. And the idea that having an intervention block, a time for some kids, not all kids, but the kids who needed to have time to catch up, is very true. But high-quality intervention requires a number of criteria to be met for it to be high-quality, to make a real difference for your kids. One is that it needs to be taught by staff who are deeply knowledgeable of the content. So if a student struggles in math, they're being taught by a teacher who is very strong in math. It also means that the intervention needs to be direct instruction. Somebody actually has to be teaching, which means a few things. One is that they need to know exactly what areas of math the students in the room are struggling in, and it helps when all the kids in the room are struggling in math and struggling in the same areas. So solid intervention, so it's content-strong staff, direct instruction, identifying areas of need, and grouping by areas of similar need. The current academic enrichment period doesn't allow you to do most of those things. So I'm not suggesting that you don't need the time to help kids catch up, and this was true before your schools closed for a pandemic. It will be doubly true in the fall. And I think to share that it was pretty universally, well, nothing in life is ever universal, but it was very widely believed that by many, many folks that we interviewed, that the academic enrichment period wasn't achieving its stated goals. It wasn't the best use of time, and I think we concur with that thinking. The second big idea I wanted to share with you tonight is consider shifting, and this is at your high school, from what's called a semester block schedule to an every-other-day block schedule. What's the difference? So both block schedules, we're not suggesting you move away from that. Block schedules by their nature means that you have fewer, longer periods each day. That's fine, too. But in a semester block schedule, it says, and I'm going to simplify the example, it says that for the first half of the year, the first semester, I might take math every day in a long block, and then the second semester, I might take English every day in a long block. In a every-other-day block schedule, the blocks are still there. The number of minutes, the number of hours that teachers teach and kids learn doesn't change, but what happens is that they learn math on the even days, if you will, and English on the odd days. So every other day, they're switching between subjects. What the research has shown is that for many students, either model is fine, but for one particular group of students, not so true, and this is for your kids who are struggling academically. The semester block schedule means that if I'm a student who struggles in math, I'll take math for the first semester. I will not take any math for, you know, three, four months. After a couple months into that, I will take the state test in math, and then I'm not going to, I won't pick up math for almost seven, eight months, and if by bad chance I don't take math until the second semester, I can go almost a year without getting top math. For kids who struggle, those big gaps in instruction lead to a lot of learning loss. The other challenge comes is if whatever I'm taking in the second semester, you know, we know you've got state testing, there are more events at the end of the year. The amount of instruction that happens inside that last month of the school year isn't of the same impact as it would be if it was any other month. And so for the courses that are in the second semester, they are a little bit short-changed by the end of the school year. Now, it is true that you will have many students who navigate this just fine, but for your kids who struggle, it is making it more difficult. Also, it doesn't mean that you have to do this for every student. I do think you're best served by this being the norm, but there are a number of cases where you might still want to have some courses, AP courses, kids who want to accelerate, be able to get more courses in. I could see a number of exceptions to this, and nothing stops you from that, but for the bulk of your kids, an every-other-day block schedule is probably more beneficial than the semester schedule. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you before I take your questions is, and I know I think the reason you've got so many folks who want to publicly participate is as you're moving into difficult budget times, and nobody likes larger classes. I mean, I don't, you don't. I've been a superintendent, I've been a school board member. If you find yourself having to think about class size, one thing we want to put out there is the concept of not having just one target class-size figure, but having more than one, and you do, but this is really thinking about for non-core classes, the electives in the high school, setting a target that says, hey, we can have larger classes, if we have to have larger classes, better to have them in the non-core than in the core. That would give you some flexibility as you manage your budget. But if you can preserve the current class sizes in the core, if you can, that's a great thing to do. But we do see some opportunity to just debate and consider whether core classes and non-core classes should have the same target. Let me pause there. I think those are the three most important points I wanted to share. I'd love to take your questions.
Hey, everyone. I'm going to do round robin like in the last meeting, so I will start with Ms. Cook, and then I'll just go around and make sure everyone has an opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually, I thank you for your presentation and the report. I enjoyed reading both the one focused on high school and the one focused on middle school, and I'm curious how Dr. Heron and her team will implement some of your recommendations, particularly given the budget conversations that we're going to be having in the next month or so. But I would be curious about your, when I think about this through the lens of our strategic plan and one of our goal area focuses is equity, and you mentioned that several times in the report, and I would just like to get your take on how revamping our schedules at the middle school and high school would further equity, if you could just talk about that.
Absolutely. So I think there are numerous dimensions to equity. So the first is obviously equal and equitable are not the same, but different isn't always better either. So the first question I would ask you is, as you saw differences, and obviously, there's a gazillion numbers in this report, that is the nature of this kind of work, but as you see differences in, say, class size by department or class size by school, the first thing you want to ask yourself, is that a difference that was intentional and serves your equity goal? Or is that a historic, simply different because it's different? And, you know, there are 100 reasons there are differences. Some are really, really good, and others are just history. So that's my first point, that when you see differences, are they in fact there for a purpose? The second piece that I think sometimes the equity discussion loses sight of, kids who come from more challenging backgrounds, kids who have greater needs, in a model of equity, deserve greater support and greater resources. That I will say emphatically. It is not clear, and the research actually is clear, they don't necessarily need smaller classes. And so one of the odd things that happens is when a school invests resources in, say, smaller classes, and particularly in this case, maybe, you know, five or 10% smaller. There's no evidence that says a smaller class actually helps kids catch up. And taking those resources, but kids do need something extra, kids who struggle, kids who are coming from more challenging backgrounds, I'm taking the resources and providing extra intervention, providing extra mental health counseling. And so I think in a view of equity, some schools and some need more, but not necessarily smaller classes, because that's not actually been a lever that has substantially leveled the playing field for them and raised their achievement.
Do you have additional questions, Ms. Cook? Okay. Ms. Hummel?
Hi, thank you. This was a great presentation and a lot to take in. I guess my one question would be, my kids were in high school, in middle school, probably 10 or 15 years ago, when the block schedule was being touted as a way for students to advance and become a more attractive package for universities to be able to advance quickly through the sciences and through the maths. And you're saying, I guess, that there's a way for this to happen for the exceptions, but I'm just wondering, in reality, how does that work? How can you have the acceleration of some of our upper-level classes work for some of our college-bound students? And how does that all work? Sorry.
One, thank you for saying you enjoyed the presentation and the report, right? Being interesting and talking about scheduling isn't always the easiest thing in the world, so I appreciate that. I think there are a few things to keep in mind, and I'm going to be very frank with you. The topic of block scheduling strikes a chord, an emotion in so many people. There are people who love it, and it will cure baldness and get all your kids into, you say it did not work for me. It will do amazing things, and there are people who hate block schedules and cannot find anything good about them. Here is what the research has said, and it has been shown time and time again, that a block schedule is no better and no worse than any other kind of schedule. The things that matter is that continuity of instruction, the quality of instruction, much more so, the rigor of instruction. So the first one I do want to say is a block schedule is neither better nor worse, but people tend to have really strong feelings about it. Second, that there are many, 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 many super-high-performing, college-bound, even Ivy League-bound schools in America that do not have a block schedule. And so there are many paths to greatness, and I think that sometimes people hang on to the block as the lever of success, where it's really the teachers and it's the kids. That said, you can build a schedule in which some courses are taught on a semester and others are taught every other day. It definitely adds some complexity to the scheduling. But, you know, middle and high school schedules are built using very powerful software. There are settings and features that allow you to do that. The big issue is you just need to make sure you've got a fairly skilled person who does the scheduling. It certainly in some ways means that you need to be thinking about what courses mirror. If you're going to have a first-half-year, might be one AP course, and the second half would be another. Your schools are big enough that you could even have some sections that, if they're fairly popular classes, that would run, one section would run on a semester and one would run every other day. Now, as I've said this, and again, it can all be done. There's no question that your guidance counselors are getting mad at me as I speak, because it is easier to do it all one way or the other, but I think that the most important thing to remember is you've got different groups of kids. They have different needs. Our experience and our recommendation is that you can meet the needs of both. It's not a matter of which group wins and which group loses, and you want to make sure that you have a schedule that is meeting everybody's needs. And I do think that you can do that, but that the semester block system is probably detrimental to some of your more struggling students.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Levinson. Thanks for this report. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Mrs. Young? You're muted, Mrs. Young.
Okay, am I still muted?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, no, I appreciate the report, too, and I do appreciate the emphasis that on different kids have different needs, because one of my concerns is for those students that have been studying math. I've always felt that that was detrimental to many, many students, so I appreciate the report, and I will be very curious as to what Dr. Heron has planned for this report, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also appreciate the report, and I have to say that none of the conclusions are really that surprising to me, particularly the AEP time, particularly the high school level. And, you know, I think the block scheduling on whole works for our folks, but I understand the impact there. So I really don't have anything else to add, but like everyone else has said, I'm going to be interested to see how it is implemented going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Beers? Wait, you're muted, Dr. Beers.
You saved me till last.
Well, but you will be first next time.
I have two or three questions. I'm going to speak to you more as a professional educator than as a parent. As I have spent my entire life in education, and almost all of my work has been focused on intervention. Intervention with elementary students and high school students who are struggling in reading and writing. And I have to say, I don't totally agree with some of the conclusions and recommendations that you have come up with. One of the things that struck me, and I think research has always been clear about that, you're right about the size of classes. There is no really significant difference until you drop down, then have a ratio of 15 to 1. You go above that, you can have 20, you can have 30, you can have 40. You're not going to see a significant difference. And one of the things that we have always talked about is trying to get to that sort of magical ratio, and it's very difficult, but the closer you get to it, the better students are going to, the better experience the students are going to have. I think the other thing, I guess the other thing that, one other question is, in light of the incredible changes that have gone on in our schools and schools all across the country with a rapid need and, in some cases, real difficulty. Just look at Fairfax County in Virginia, moving towards delivery of curriculum and instruction online. We're looking at the fall. We're looking at not really knowing what we're going to have in the fall. We're not absolutely positive that we're going to be through summer, all of this pandemic experience, but I do know that we are spending a tremendous amount of energy and money making sure that all of our students will have access to online instruction, because we are going to make sure that every single one of them has a laptop. And so we're looking at major changes already in the fall. Teachers trying to deal with and understand and work with what we're really talking about now more are hybrid courses, where socially distant students can be in the classroom, but they also will be engaged in learning online. So there are major changes for them and the teachers coming up. When would you suggest that we make these schedule changes in the high school? I know, for example, that we do have a block schedule, but we also have courses that go year-round. So we really have a combination schedule. It isn't simply a block schedule. We have a number of courses that follow an AB schedule. One other point that I would make is in a block schedule, you have four courses. You're right. You go through those courses faster than you would go through courses in an AP schedule. Courses in an AB schedule schedule. Courses in an A B schedule can be as many as eight courses. I'm concerned that if we move too rapidly in that direction, that, um, they're going to be real consequences for the struggling learners. Some of them have difficulty just keeping track of what day it is in terms of, do I do English today? Do I, you know, whatever it might be. So, um, I guess that's, and so I, my biggest worry is that with all of the other changes that we're going to have to deal with. And financial is just one of them. There're going to be other changes as well is when would you suggest we start to do that?
Sure. A, a number of great questions and, and great thought. So one, I want to just acknowledge and agree the research on class size. You and I are reading the same research and drawing the same conclusions. So it is true that if you can get down to fifteen students, um, there are benefits. When I said there aren't benefits, I did not presume because I've almost never seen a high school, even a middle school that's been able to do that. So, um, and you are correct. I did not think it was a, a high probability. Um, and you know, the difference in class sizes, you have still put them in the twenty ones and twenty twos. Um, the question of, you know, is the semester versus the A B, uh, better? I definitely hear your point that, um, having fewer subjects to think about at one time is a plus. There are trade offs to all of this. Uh, one of the things we say in the scheduling biz is you can schedule anything, just not everything. Uh, the nature of scheduling is you just make a series of unpleasant and difficult trade offs. Um, and that certainly one of the trade offs of having content, um, throughout the year is that you have eight courses, not four at once. Um, and that's a trade off. I, I, I think the question of when is really fascinating. Uh, we are, should not surprise you in conversations with more than a hundred school systems in the last thirty days about preparing for the fall. And I suspect by a month from now, we'll have been in conversations with two hundred and fifty of them. Um, people are, it's fascinating to watch how districts are thinking about this. Uh, one hand said, you know, there's so much uncertainty and there's so much change and so much stress, uh, we should do as little as we, as little change as possible and bring some stability to an unstable world. Um, and I understand that thinking. The other group has said, but the world is unstable. The world has changed pretty substantially. And even though I don't know what the future holds, I can say with near certainty, you will have more struggling kids. You will have more kids who have, you know, not learned as much in the last few months. You will have more learning loss. Um, and when they come back, and now that's a big, I can't tell you what day they're coming back. And that's the scenario planning, but when they come back, having extra time to learn for the kids who need it, having really strong intervention to make up for that learning loss and the missed instruction is going to be really valuable. So we have a lot of districts we work with who were not knee deep into a scheduling review, who are starting that, uh, this week, next week, last week, saying, we're going to have to rethink our schedules to provide more time for some kids in some subjects, particularly the subjects that build on each other. And you can't learn algebra two if you missed part of algebra one. And when are you going to be able to make that up? So we're seeing more people accelerate the discussion of the very topics. And mind you, these recommendations started being formed before the pandemic came. Um, but these are the kinds of recommendations we see people doing post pandemic. I think the trickiest part, and I, you know, I, I've said to your superintendent and many others, I'm really happy I'm not a superintendent these days. Um, you know, you can't do a lot of this through remote learning. And so if you are planning for, and I know you are, the portion of the time um, next year, if that happens, that you are remote learning, that is going to be a different plan. But when the day comes, and I, hopefully it comes next year sometime.
Well, let, let me just ask a quick question. Okay. If, if somebody's school systems are going to be doing that, how does that fit into your philosophy about scheduling? Does that, or is it possible you can tweak scheduling so that it fits in there? Because especially with hybrid courses, you're going to have, you're going to have those students in, in, uh, uh, in real time in the classroom.
I, I think in the, the hybrid model, I think that we in the world is trying to figure out what that's going to look like. Uh, to me, I think that the guiding principles as you are thinking about schedules for next year, and I'm gonna, I know you guys have a very long agenda tonight, but so I want to just recap what I think should be the guiding principles um, that drove these recommendations and as you apply them in a very uncertain world is more time on core instruction is going to be helpful. Um, second, that some core, some topics are more foundational than others. And so particularly being able to front load extra time to learn those things that weren't learned this spring will be helpful. Uh, that some kids are going to need significant levels of extra time and intervention from very strong teachers. Um, that was true without the pandemic, going to be doubly true. Uh, that some of your kids can and should be able to accelerate. And you want to meet all the different kids' needs. Uh, those who need more time and those who can move faster and, you know, try to avoid the either or uh, scenario, somebody loses in that. And I think the, the last thought um, is to, um, excuse me, as you move through the, the scheduling is, you know, don't love what you had just because you had it. Um, and schedules are a hard thing to change. I, I accept that. Um, but there's great leverage in what you can do for kids, um, if you can take a fresh look.
Well, one, one other quick question and I'll stop. Um, I, I, I have not read the full report. I just read the executive summary. But one of the things that I was curious about is, is I saw statements in there where you contacted building administrators to get information or to answer questions, that sort of thing. What I didn't see, and I, and I'm curious about that, uh, what was the level of involvement of classroom teachers as you were doing?
Yeah. Uh, so we, we spoke with high school and middle school general education teachers. We, the classroom, you know, core subjects, also elective teachers. Uh, we spoke to guidance counselors at all the schools, but we also actually spoke to middle and high school students as well. Um, so we, we did have a fair amount of input from a, a wide range of staff and a, the wide range of students as well as the administrators. And if we didn't put that in writing, bad on us, um, but it definitely took place.
Yeah, well, see, um, because I, I'm, I am curious about that. The other thing is, um, when you were getting information from teachers, uh, were some of these scenarios, uh, discussed as well? Or, or, or did the recommendations come, you know, after, without any, um, further thought of getting input from the teachers?
Uh, in our conversations with teachers, we asked them what was working well. We asked them what were unmet needs. Um, we did not, we did not say, hey, do you like version A or version B? Uh, but we asked them about what they saw as working well and, and not. And I will tell you that, for example, the, um, the academic enrichment period, lots of staff felt that time could be used much better.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Appreciate you taking the time to answer, uh.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Um, I just have a few thoughts as, as well. Um, this is a lot to digest. And so, Dr. Heron, maybe it would be possible. I, I have a lot of detailing questions um, and others might as well. So if we could bring those to our two by one to flesh those out with you, but did, I had a couple of process questions and then a point of clarification and then maybe just one question for you. Thanks again for your presentation. Um, I wanted the listening public to understand that we began this evaluation process some time ago and it was not in response to COVID. We had no idea COVID was going to take place. So, um, the first process question is how, how long did you spend talking with our administrators and teachers? And I'm so glad to hear that you had a chance to talk to our students as well, but how long was that process?
Well, obviously the, the work has spread out over many, many months and I'm, I've lost track of it. Um, uh, we've had, you know, a time, a number of days on site. Uh, we've had numerous Zoom meetings since and quite a few phone conversations, uh, both before and after, um, travel ended, but I don't have the exact number of hours. Certainly our sense is that we had, we gained a very good and a very detailed understanding of your district and the feedback as we shared with, uh, principals, A P guidance counselors and others as we started to share back. Um, also seemed to see that we got a very good idea. Um, I, very good, I, we think we know what's going on there. And again, we were able to do those visits before the pandemic came and then continue the conversations in forums like this.
Thank you. And then just a point of clarification and talking about the standardized testing. So currently as, uh, Dr. Beers and Ms. Humble have mentioned, we have a hybrid block schedule. So, um, we do have students that are taking year long classes. We have students that are taking semester classes, but my understanding, Dr. Han, maybe you could speak to this down maybe later. Um, so let's say if you're taking algebra one in the fall, do you not take your S O L at the, at the end of that semester? You, you don't take it the following spring?
We'll have to ask Dr. Burley to answer that question. I know she's just in behind the scenes.
Dr. Whirly, you're muted.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. We do, um, ta- take our S O L test two times a year. So if you're in a course for the first semester and it's a semester course, we do test in January as well as in the spring.
Yes, I just wanted to point, make that clarification. And then, um, again, so many detailed questions. What, one, the, going back to something that, that Dr. Beers mentioned and Ms. Hummel's, since we do have the hybrid schedule and you mentioned that it is, you know, if we were to switch to the A B model, it would still be possible to continue to have what I'm, what I would call a hybrid for some students. So not that we were necessarily looking for cost savings pre-COVID, um, but now certainly in, in the, in the face of, um, budget crisis, we are looking for cost savings. We also want to do what's right for our students. So what's the threshold of, of what's best for students and what's best economically for a hybrid? Cause we have a hybrid right now.
Okay. So, um, a couple of things. So one is you do have a hybrid, but the vast majority, uh, over ninety percent of, uh, seats are in the semester version. So I, I don't want to, yes, you have some of both, but don't over emphasize what the mix is. It is mostly a semester system, some exceptions to that. Um, now fascinating enough, from an economic point of view, uh, A B or semester in and of itself doesn't change. Staffing doesn't change the cost. Uh, what drives cost is quite honestly average class size. And you can manage, there are many strategies for managing class size. Um, and we've shared a few of them, but if you have the exact same average class size in a hybrid, A B or semester, they will all cost exactly the same.
Thank you. And then, um, just speaking to class size, um, and I know Ms. Cook was, was, um, had mentioned equity as well. I know that not all of our buildings, um, have the same physical space, like for example, our newest middle school, James Blair Middle School, those, that classroom space is actually smaller. I know cited in your report was that James Blair classrooms have fewer children than the Hornsby Middle School classrooms. Um, and there, while there are some demographic changes, there's also physical space limitations. Like we could honestly not put the same number of children in the Blair classrooms that we can put in the Hornsby classrooms. So I guess I would be reticent to, to come up with a division wide number. Um, one, I'm concerned about equity and demographics, but two, some of our buildings are just different and just hold different numbers of students, which is why the James Blair numbers are smaller.
You know, and as I said, um, if you see differences, we're just raising the question, are they there for a good reason? If, not all differences are bad and not all differences are good. Um, and that's why you all get to be the school board and make those kinds of value trade offs.
Right. And then just one last question. Um, the, one of the things that struck me the most glaringly and shifting from the block schedule to the mostly A B schedule is the impact on early college, which is a relatively new program that we rolled out about three years ago. So currently we have, uh, over a hundred, probably a hundred and seventy five students. Kathy, you could probably correct me, Dr. Whirly, um, that participated last year. So they finished their senior year, um, first semester and then their second semester, they were fully, um, immersed at Thomas Nelson Community College. So if we go fully A B, how does that impact early college?
Again, the, um, you know, again, I, I think the idea of having the, the hybrid that for some students the semester works, uh, there's no question about it. Um, and I think that the things that you all want to wrestle with is, is there a way to meet the needs of struggling students and the needs of kids who want to accelerate? Uh, we believe there is, and I think our, our goal was to raise, uh, the issue that um, the semester can be challenging for, um, kids who struggle. And at the same time, acknowledge and recognize that the semester has some benefits perhaps for another group of kids and trying to find the right mix and not help just one or just the other, but to help both seems to be you, you, the best place for you to move, if you can.
Right. And I agree. And so getting back to my, my question that I asked just a minute ago and then, and then I will, I'm done. So what is that magical mix? Like, is there a division that has that magical hybrid mix that is a balance? Like, you're right, and we are mostly a block schedule. Um, and we do have some A B classes, but so what is that magical mix that meets the needs of most students?
And I think it's taking a look, you mentioned there's about a hundred kids who are, um, in the early college looking at what courses they're taking. I mean, a hundred is a lot, but it's not a huge number. And saying, hey, what are the courses that those kids need to have, that you would want to have as a semester? Um, again, I suspect it's not, uh, English nine. I mean, you know, these are senior juniors and seniors and not freshmen. And so I think it is looking at the schedule by student and by section. And again, a good scheduler, when these things take hours, not months to do, to say, hey, I've got these hundred kids. What are the courses they're looking for? That, that would be best suited for them if they were, um, on the semester. You schedule those as a semester, you may have other sections of that same course, uh, that's not. Um, but it's, they're, they're relatively small numbers and they're often dealt with, right? I mean, they use the phrase, they don't really mean it, but hand scheduling. You're really looking at individual kids and working through the plan for them. And we see that in district, uh, divisions much larger than yours. So it's, it is definitely doable.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any additional thoughts or questions? I know, um, we can bring additional questions to Dr. Heron in our two by one meeting. Okay. Thanks again.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Take care. You get to sign off.
Yes, I do. I'm very excited.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay. So now is the opportunity to, um, hear citizens' comments who have, have called in previously. And so typically we would have thirty minutes allotted for citizens' comments. Um, we have slightly over thirty citizens who have called in. Um, we very much want to hear them. If we were having a face to face meeting, we would probably cut their three minutes probably in half. Um, we can't do that because they're pre-recorded. So I'm letting folks know ahead of time, um, that we're, this will be a little over an hour in citizens' comments. So, uh, I want to give our board members, uh, do you have questions or comments before we move into that phase? Is everyone good? And so, um, I will toss it back to staff who are working behind the magic curtain to make that happen. So we just, I don't have to toss it to Mr. Kelly. He's not going to read guidelines.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to give citizen comments under these challenging circumstances. My name is Amy. My name is Amy Quirk, and I am a parent, a professor at William &amp; Mary and a member of the Village Initiative. First, I want to extend my deep appreciation for the efforts of the superintendent, the staff of all the schools and the school boards to meet our children's needs during these unprecedented times. I am also very grateful for the excellent communication regarding the current budget situation and its potential effects on our children's education. Finally, I appreciate the efforts of the school board to advocate for our children via VR funding partners. The Village Initiative joins you in this effort to protect our students from devastating funding cuts in a time when their education has already been disrupted. It is clear that cuts of some magnitude are likely unavoidable, and it will be the work of the school board and the superintendent to decide how to make those cuts. I want to urge you tonight to put equity first as you make these difficult decisions. For example, the superintendent has suggested that increased class sizes may be necessary. It would be irresponsible to apply these class size increases evenly across all schools. We have clear disparities within and across schools as the Village Initiative's annual equity report has demonstrated. Increased class sizes and other cuts should be made proportionally according to needs. Under the current online instruction, it is likely that existing inequities will be exacerbated as already disadvantaged students are less likely to have reliable access to technology, may have parents who are essential workers and cannot support their learning, and may be struggling to have enough food and other basic necessities. The priority for the 2020-21 budget should be to ameliorate these inequities. And treating all kids in schools the same will not exceed that goal. At a time when it is many, when it is many of our more disadvantaged families that have been risking their own health and lives as frontline workers during the pandemic, it would be cruel to dismiss these students' differential needs. The Village Initiative urges you to put equity first in the 2020-21 budget. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I'm Shay Mullen-Dyke. My address is 3919 Sondate Drive, Greens Springs West, Williamsburg, 23188. I have two children, two teenagers, who are in Georgetown High School. They're both in sports. And also, my daughter is in choir. I also am a trauma-informed yoga teacher and specialize in children's trauma. Of course, the pandemic is an incredible trauma for all of our families. Our children are going to need movement, expressive outlets like art, music, song, dance, creative writing, anything to express their feelings, but also to connect it through somatic movement, through the body. That is how a feeling happens. If we take that away, we're going to see increases in behavioral issues, especially if we have increases in class size. We're going to need to pay for more counselors. The main focus needs to be on social, emotional learning as we go back to school. So therefore, the music and the arts are going to be more important than ever, not less. We really can't afford to take them away. And in fact, we should look at ways to increase them. I would love to help in any way. I think all of our parents are so concerned. We understand there's budgetary restraints, but we need to look at the long picture here. We need to look at the whole picture and music and arts has to be a part of it. It's where we make sense of the world, the right side of the brain. It's our strategic processor of our brain. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tinsell. I live at 209 Governor Edward Naught Court, and I'm a senior at Georgetown High School. I grew up attending my sister's graduation and even attended the graduation of my older friends. Never before had I questioned how to be able to walk the stage. It was a moment I had been working towards my entire academic career, securing it in my mind. Now that defining moment is in jeopardy for me as well as my fellow seniors attending Georgetown, Lafayette and Williams. With students not having seen each other for months, it holds even more weight as it says that the last time we'll all be together before starting the next chapter of our lives. I recognize the concerns of having large gatherings in June. So I'm asking that WJCC consider delaying the fourth gathering instead of settling for virtual ceremonies, which greatly diminishes the feelings of our seniors. Individuals can still take any measures they feel necessary to curb these concerns. For example, they could wear masks, ask their elderly relatives to skip the ceremony, or simply not attend. I'm only advocating for a choice of those who are healthy to attend as close to a traditional graduation as possible. I, as well as the 476 others who assign my decision, here at a traditional in-person ceremony that includes everyone will be safe before our seniors head off to college. Pacific Public Schools has already made the decision to have a traditional ceremony in an arena in August. The teachers, parents and students of WJCC have worked so hard towards this moment. So I ask that you consider a request. Thank you.
Daisy Dunes, 4707, Yearville Loop, Williamsburg, Virginia 23185. I'm calling today to make sure that our seniors across the 2020 have a traditional graduation as prior classes have. They'd otherwise to walk across that stage in front of their parents, their other students, their teachers and our principals and our community. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Ellen Peters. My address is 1608 Harbor Road, Williamsburg. I want to voice my support for preserving funding for the arts in our schools. Arts education is critical for producing well-rounded students. In particular, research has shown the benefits of studying and performing music for brain development, time management, math and communication skills, and cooperative learning. For kids who find school difficult, sometimes the arts program is the only thing keeping them engaged. Please don't take these opportunities away from our kids. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Quirk. I live in the Point at Georgetown, 2716 Small Peach Trees. And I'm in the Berkeley District. I'm actually an acting coach who goes into the middle schools in our area, specifically Berkeley Middle School, as well as helping out with other schools in the area. And I have to say that cutting the arts in our schools seems to me that that should be the very last option. I have three different children who are distinct, different learners. They all were involved with orchestra and elementary school, all the way through middle school. My two oldest did it through ninth grade until it got to the point where they had to make some choices and, and focused upon something like theater, which is what they chose to do. My youngest daughter is a, she's a sixth grader. And she was very involved with Mr. Kriner at Clara Bird's, doing the choir as well as orchestra. All three of my kids have been involved with their musicals at Berkeley Middle School and now with their theater and musicals in One Act at Georgetown. And I think we all know that studies have shown that when you have arts and things like music, that there, there are obvious signs that this is helping them be a more well-rounded student as well as doing better in things like math, which doesn't really seem like it would have a correlation, but I can say that it does. And as I have a child who has an anxiety disorder, I can say that socially, something like theater or orchestra, where you have a group of peers that you can feel supported by and encouraged and nurtured by, means a, means a person. And aren't we worried about our kids as a whole person and not just one student in one class? So I think that we have this money in our rainy day fund. It's raining. This is the time to use that. These 10% cuts would be detrimental to our children in Jame City County. It's at the very least, do the 5% cut and dip into some of this fund. This is why we have it. And, and also, as someone who's concerned about, you know, one day in the future, selling my home, I'm concerned that what this is going to debar real estate values. So overall, I just, I would really like the board to consider the fact that we are worried about our child, not just as a student in one class, but as a healthy human, as a positive member of our community, and creating our art with the respect that it deserves. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Donna Gossfeld. And I live at 2340 West Island Road, Williamsburg, Virginia 23185. I currently have a student at Georgetown. At this point, he is not involved in any of the arts programs. But I do see that cutting this program would not be beneficial. However, I do enjoy going to, at least two plays a year at Georgetown. I have been to Lafayette for a play. I just feel that the community and the school system both would suffer with a loss of a budget cut for any type of arts class. I hope you will consider not cutting the budget and have a wonderful day. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to me. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is David Levinson, and we live at 144 South Fort, here in Williamsburg. And I'm calling in regards to the school board meeting that's going to be held tomorrow, Tuesday, the 19th. Calling in regards to the idea that the seniors here in WJCC schools should be allowed to graduate in person. And I'm going to direct your attention to a WY Daily article that just came out, actually about an hour ago, regarding Newport News Public Schools. And they set a pretty nice blueprint and guidelines how they're going to do their graduation in person. And I really think that the WJCC schools should consider a similar program, just not letting something be done on social media or something like that. So please consider having the seniors graduate in person. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Wise. I live at 4225 Rosewood Court in Williamsburg, 23188. I'm also a WJCC teacher, and so I'm calling to express my concern that you're considering such severe cuts for our school system. As we go back to school in the fall, the challenges we face will be more, not less, meaning that the funding we need will be much more, not less. In order to do the things that students need and teachers need to stay safe, like smaller class sizes, more materials that don't have to be shared between students, basic things that are being recommended to help us teach in the wake of COVID-19. We need money to do that. That's in the wake of COVID-19, much less a normal school year where the things that you're thinking about cutting, like art or funding for TA programs, mean so much to our students. Neighboring districts are not facing the losses we are. And while I understand that each district's funding source is different and that each district is facing a different scenario, I would urge you to cut everything you can in terms of education. Please be so careful in making these considerations because our kids need good school now more than ever. And WJCC needs to keep the teaching talent it has built up, the amazing teacher assistants, the amazing arts programs. We don't want to lose that. This pandemic will pass, but some of those losses might never come back. Some of those programs might never be restored. I know you're facing a very difficult decision. So I appreciate the consideration and time you're seeking for it. I don't take that lightly. So thank you for hearing our concerns.
Hello, this is Robert Opiker, 107 Laurel Court, Williamsburg, Virginia, 23185. Hello, I'm Robert Opiker, resident of Jame City County since 1993, parent of two fine young men, soaring part the product of superior education through WJCC schools. I'm a former silver smith at Columbia Williamsburg, artist, and since 2007, visual arts teacher to 560 students weekly at Math &amp; Elementary School. Thank you for taking a moment to listen to my voice. I know some of you closely, and I trust you are all in this to help provide the best execution possible for the next generation. I know you are all grappling with a set of issues that is stretching all of us to come up with creative ways to continue to educate our students and provide a safe, healthy road for our schools and community. I urge you strongly to continue to preserve all teaching positions, staff, assistant teaching positions and programs. Larger class sizes are simply unworkable when the science and health experts clearly state that distancing is needed to continue to slow the spread of infection. Erosion of support for the arts is symptomatic of a society that is losing its center. The whole of education is what we are about in educating the whole child, the whole human being. After the trauma that has been experienced by all of us and shutting down abruptly under a cloud of doubt and fear, I hope and pray that as you plan for the coming year, you will continue to find ways to maintain all the things that our children with joy and hope to make this world a richer place for everyone. Thank you for your service to us all.
Hi, my name is Jill Lounseri. I am at 2840 Bennett Pond Road in Williamsburg. I'm calling with some concerns regarding the budget cuts that are being proposed. In particular, chief concerns are with the arts programs and the loss of AP programs. The community can and does plan to provide evidence and findings of the importance of being the arts programs and staff in the school system. Many of us know the value of these programs stretches far beyond the school years in a child's life. There are multiple studies and factual evidence that back this. So as a parent, I implore the board to find ways to remove any impact that any budget cuts will have on the arts program. And secondly, the risk of losing AP programs would truly be devastating. The class of, both classes 2020, 2021 and 2022 especially, have already had their education impacted by COVID-19. And with the fierce level of competition for college applicants, taking these options off the table would really be devastating for those kids who have worked so hard for their higher education process. I'm sure that you know many families have moved to the WJCC district because of the level of programs available and really the loss of those AP programs would have, have true repercussions on those moving on to the college level. So I really do implore the board to find ways or other revenue to keep these programs afloat. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Brent Cowell. I live on Newport Avenue in Williamsburg, Virginia. I currently have one child who I think is at WJCC school district and another that we're getting kind of guy in this fall. I just want to urge the school board to take equity into account when deciding to revise budgets. While I understand some cuts are likely, likely, making such cuts on a per student level will actually have disproportionate impacts on schools that have higher levels of already disadvantaged students. For example, cuts to ESL program funding will have a disproportionate impact on schools with higher numbers of ESL students. And vision increasing class size because our schools equally will disproportionately impact students if schools were higher. Numbers of students didn't have reliable access to technology for online learning this spring. Speaking this all into account, I just want to urge the school board to take the differential needs of students and schools into account when reallocating its budget. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Denise Cook. I live in Jame City County. I am an incoming board member of the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra. And I just wanted to make a few comments about the budget carry process this afternoon. I certainly understand that you all have some really difficult decisions to make. And you, as well as the county supervisors, as well as everyone across the nation that's struggling with trying to mitigate the damaging effects of this pandemic. But I do hope you will take into account that arts funding, perhaps at this time more than another, is desperately needed. When the students come back to school, music, art, those irreplaceable, irreplaceable parts of their education can't be just thrown to the side. So I do hope you will look at any way to maintain the current arts budget or to make sure that the damage is very minor. Thank you very much.
Caprice Munson of Lawson.
Hello, my name is Caprice Munson. I am calling on behalf of myself. Do not take away programs that are being official to my future. I deserve the chance to explore music and art and speeding. I need to enjoy fun things like field trips. Please keep me a six-year-old first grader in your thoughts. I will ask all WJCC students. When the findings were asked, what opportunities will be available? And taking away based on your decisions, make the best choice. Your friend, Caprice Munson.
Hi, yes, my name is Lauren DePolee, and I have a senior at Georgetown High. I believe our 2020 senior class deserves I believe our twenty-twenty senior class deserves an in-person graduation. They missed the last three months of school, their final sports seasons, the final walk through the high school, their prom, their senior trip, and so much more. If the graduation cannot go on as scheduled in June, please hold it in July or August before seniors go to colleges and the teachers come back to school. We can do it on the football stadium by the school to allow for social distancing, ample parking, and minimal requirements. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Michelle Williams and I do have a senior at James Town High School. And I am interested in seeing if there's a way to do an in-person ceremony. Um, maybe perhaps not for the actual June thirteenth date, but perhaps based on the phases and how the rest of the state opens, maybe we could have the ceremony at a later time. Uh, perhaps maybe the end of July or very beginning of August. I don't think you can fill much past the beginning of August, but it would be nice to do something in person if at all possible. Or maybe to just do it in a different format. Um, maybe a drive-by um at the stadium for a ceremony uh as some other schools are doing. Or maybe perhaps having the students on the field with parents coming in groups um to be able to witness it. But I do think there are some other things we can do and I look forward to having you all take a look at that. We appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
My name is Carissa Munson of fourteen forty-two North Mount Vernon Avenue. Today I'm a board supervisor. My name is Carissa Munson. I'm a pretty active parent of the WJCC school district, especially with our school Clara Burd Baker and its local PPA. Let me start by saying I'm holding you in my socks and prayers. I do not envy your position right now and frankly, I hope this is the toughest decision you will ever face with during your careers and the careers of our children. With these tough times, we know that sacrifices will have to be made. But I'm asking you to strongly reconsider some of these proposed cuts. I'm sure you can all appreciate how special arts and these platforms are and how much our children enjoy and benefit from these programs. I think it could be beneficial for us as a district for you to explain why our district is giving cut so much funding more than other surrounding districts of public. However, I still understand why cuts have to be made. Please make the best decisions possible for our children. We need these programs for opportunities to help them thrive and find their talents and well-estate it, enjoy life. We have amazing teaching staff here in the WJCC and we work very hard to advance all of our children. I believe Whitney Houston sang a fact. When she said, I believe the children are the future, teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride, it makes it easier. Let their laughter remind us of how it used to be. Let their laughter remind us of how it should be. Come on, WJCC, we got this. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Oleksi. I live at fifteen Enson Stents. School system. Through my own PPA board member for several years and county staff responsible for environmental education in our schools, parks, and neighborhoods have throughout all corners of our community. All three of my children have participated in the WJCC fine arts program for ten years combined. And their experience with this exceptional program has been invaluable for their education, discipline, values, understanding of teamwork, confidence, their specific skill sets and with their instruments and their understanding of and appreciation for diversity, to name a few. So please fully fund our schools and the programs that are so essential to maintaining an equitable balance of opportunities to all youth in our school district. Thank you. Bye-bye.
This is Barbara Miroczkowski, M R O C Z K O W S K I, one twenty-one Woodmere Court, Williamsburg. I'm calling about the budget for the schools in the upcoming years. Please fully fund the schools. The children need the education this time with COVID. It's even more, it shows us how more critical it is than ever. Uh, we can't limit the funding and also the fine arts programs are incredibly important. This is the one opportunity for many children to receive this type of education and be exposed to the fine arts, which creates better citizens in the end. So in the future, we need children who are educated and well-rounded to become citizens who are educated and well-rounded. Please continue to fully fund schools as well as the fine arts programs.
Hello, my name is Song Kang, K A N G. And I am the president of the Williamsburg Youth Orchestra and as well as a parent of three school-aged children between the ages of ten and seventeen. My wife and I both played musical instruments growing up and all three of our children play music in their schools and throughout the community. I understand these are unprecedented times with extreme pressure on school budgets. However, I would like to express my support of the public school music programs for a few reasons. First, there are numerous neurocognitive studies that demonstrate the positive effect of music on brain development. Music has been associated with beneficial effects on memory, attention, intelligence, as well as physical and emotional health. Therefore, music education produces better students overall. And if school music programs are reduced, I believe there will be greater indirect adverse consequences to school performance for years to come. Second, music, especially in groups of enso- in in groups and ensembles, teach invaluable skills to our youth. They include teamwork and collaboration as they work together for a common goal, leadership among older and more advanced students as they step up to take responsibility, consideration of others because each section has moments when they need to speak up, another moment when they need to stop and listen to others, dedication with hours of practice needed to prepare a piece for performance, respect as they follow the guidance of their teachers and music directors, perseverance because I have been inspired by students who overcome tremendous personal, family, and physical challenges to achieve the goal of their performance. I have experienced this personally and have seen this repeatedly for several years while I have been working with student musicians of the youth orchestras and wind ensembles. I think most will agree that our society would very much benefit some men and women with these skills. Third, Williamsburg and the greater peninsula have been uniquely productive of extremely talented musicians who have continued on in college and even professionally. And these students have been public ambassadors of Williamsburg throughout the nation. There are so many other benefits to music education uh that I don't have time to address. In summary, I recognize that these are difficult times, but I believe cuts to the WJCC music programs could have hugely impactful consequences, not just for the students, but for Williamsburg community as a whole. Thank you for your considerations.
Hi, my name is Todd Kraus. I live at two seventeen Captain Newport Circle in Williamsburg. I've been here for a couple of years now. Uh, I've worked for a long time in physics. In fact, I have an advanced degree in physics, so you can imagine that uh my background is as firmly planted in the STEM disciplines, as you can imagine. Nevertheless, I still encourage my daughter, who's attending elementary school here in Williamsburg, to uh participate in as many of the art uh fine arts classes she can. And in particular, in uh studying music. In fact, most of the physicists I'm friends with have a background in music like myself. To anybody who's studied both, uh they know it's pretty clear that they're two complementary ways of thinking and one helps the other. So I just bring that up to say that I heartily encourage the school board to consider doing whatever it can to make sure that as much as we prop up hard sciences like physics, math, chemistry, other sciences, that we also try to uh accord the same value to fine arts like uh visual arts and music. Thank you very much.
My name is Ingrid Brown. I'm with the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra Board. And I'm very concerned that you are going to be chopping out the um the school budget for the arts. It is so important, even now in this pandemic time, that children have the opportunity to continue with the arts. There can be all kinds of ways that this can be done during the new times. But please do not consider cutting it out totally.
Carolyn Miller, ninety-nine, Winston Park, Williamsburg. And I reside in James City County. Um, my daughter is a uh she's finishing her ninth grade year at James Town High School. And I am calling to respectfully ask that when determining the future WJCC school budget, um please, please use emergency funds and take any other possible measures to minimize the impact to our students. Um, I worry about the possible adverse impact to advanced placement course offerings, which would hurt our hardworking students. Um, my daughter happens to be one of them, um her college application. And please do whatever you can to minimize the impact to our arts program. Um, my daughter has not only been able to achieve academic success this year um in high school and as well as middle school, but also experienced a great deal of musical and theater activities. Um, these require discipline, creativity, teamwork. And it really truly was a place for her where she could relieve stress um and become a leader among her peers. Um, I'm also very concerned about the uh impact of um the a number of changes that students have had to endure this year. And I feel very strongly that um cutting programs, cutting teachers, um marking class size is just the absolute wrong direction to go and knowing that we have emergency funds to utilize for a very real crisis, not a hurricane season that may or may not be damaging, but we can make up those shortfalls later. We have a huge crisis right now and I'm currently very concerned about the mental health um of our young people right now. Um, my daughter included. You know, right now, art and performing art and um her connection to her music is really one of the few things that is keeping her going right now. So um you know that if you don't continue to fund arts and sports and advanced placement, you're gonna have to make up the difference in mental health.
Hi, my name is Doctor April Lawrence. I am a licensed teacher and educational researcher and my husband Paul is a school principal. And we have three children in WJCC schools. We moved into WJCC schools six years ago so that our children could thrive in a school district that values the fine arts. Our oldest daughter Adeline is a graduating senior from Lafayette. Because of the tremendous experiences she has had with both Linda Allen and Berkeley and with Suzanne McCleary at Lafayette, she has been accepted into the theater program at George Mason University in the fall, where she intends to study theater arts management. Our junior Katie is bored at school daily. And she's looking forward to the early college program so that she can begin to get more real-world burning opportunities. The most joy she ever had in school was when she performed in Amy Davis's orchestra program at Berkeley Middle School. Since she was in orchestra, she has performed in front of live audiences and traveled to JMU overnight. This college visit sparked an interest in higher education for our quiet middle daughter. Our youngest child John thrives in theater and orchestra at Berkeley Middle School with Mrs. Allen and Mrs. Davis. While he is an A student in business, the only real-world burning joy he gets in school is through the arts. We cannot be a district that does not value project-based learning, real-world burning, or authentic learning experiences if we cut funding for the fine arts. The fine arts could be held up as a model for other curricular areas rather than considered an extracurricular. The fine arts programs at WJCC are the best thing about this district. Our arts programs are what make it such an attractive district to home buyers. And this is known by students and parents across the Commonwealth and beyond. I often cite WJCC fine arts as model learning experiences in my own teaching as teacher K-12 teachers. Please do not cut funding for these programs. They are the best thing we have going for us. Thank you.
Hi, Deanna O'Brien, forty-seven eighty-one Bristol Circle, Williamsburg, Virginia. I would like to take a moment and talk about the arts and music and field trip situation in our schooling. I think it is very important for every elementary school kid, middle school, and high schooler to have these programs in our schools. We moved here as a military family um and have stayed in Williamsburg due to having such wonderful schools. We have stayed here for eight years as a military family that's unheard of. I want my words to be heard as I want my children in the Williamsburg James City County School because it's one of the best here in Virginia. Please consider keeping our arts programs in the schools. Thank you.
Hello, this is Sonia Coretti Hall from one 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 Falling Creek Circle. There is much experts do not know about COVID nineteen. For example, exactly how contagious it is, it's lead to the question, to what degree can infection rate of COVID nineteen be mitigated within the school environment? On the other hand, and very importantly, we don't know what kind of funding we may get from the federal government, if any. I very much understand that our community representatives are being tasked with making difficult decisions while for the most part flying blind. What we do know is the public school system was facing challenges before COVID nineteen. Some underfunded programs and supplies to underpaid teachers and overcrowded classrooms, to questionable um SOAs and the hijacking of the curriculum. And now the new reliance on an archaic and not intuitive at all parent-use, student-use system, which requires strapped and time-strapped parents and guardians and teachers to act as technology gatekeepers on the fly so students stand a chance of learning remotely during this crisis. All of these are examples of the degree to which our students pay the price for insidiously skewed priorities and choices that have been made over many years. Now enter COVID nineteen. Our school system finds itself faced with the potential of a ten million dollar reduction in its budget, a reduction for a system that was already mapped out. I think we really need to ask ourselves, is this is the best we can do for our students, our families, and our community? Perhaps instead of trying to make teachers win a fourth quarter requiring fitting a square peg into a round hole, we should instead give them the time to brainstorm on what the new normal might look like, to educate us on what, based on their expertise and experience, they believe will work best in the next year and moving forward. And what these proposed cuts would mean for our schools in the first case. If there was ever a time to be flexible, to value ingenuity, focus on efficiency, and support research based on education, it is now. As I've heard it said before, well-funded public education is a benefit to all citizens and helps keep our community a place people want to move to and raise a family. Public education is a great equalizer. It's an essential service for our children, community, and nation. There needs to be a path to fund it even during economic downturns. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dawn Forsyth and my address is ninety-five sixty-four Godin Court in Tullano, Virginia. And I am calling about the per uh budget cuts that are on the table for next year. And I am calling to let you know that our kids are heavily involved in music and theater. Um, the arts have helped our kids come out of their shells, make new friends, and have a creative outlet. They have learned um how to escape reality through the arts, deal with rejection, learn leadership, responsibility, and collaboration. They have also become more involved in the community through these activities. And as parents, we are asking that you please consider only the five percent budget cut and don't let our kids lose what they love most about going to school. They have suffered through enough this year. Thank you for listening. They have suffered through enough this year. Thank you for listening.
Sarah Rockwell Potlin, one oh nine Colonel Frederick Jones, Williamsburg VA, two-three-one-eight-five. I'm calling to express my dismay that due to the local economic situation, the school board and the board of supervisors within Jame City County are considering cutting fund, funding for arts programs within the school district. I think arts programs from high school down to elementary school are critical for social, emotional, and academic development of all students. The benefits are far reaching and go beyond, um, the artistic pursuit. I have two children, one in Berkeley Middle School and one in Jamestown High School, both of whom have utilized the services of the music program, the choir and band. And I would be extremely dismayed if these services were cut. I will be following who votes for what and I will be advocating within my community to make sure that people have ensured that these services continue to be available for kids. In addition, I would like to comment on the sports program. After-school sports, uh, are again integral part of the school system experience here in Jame City County. And cutting those sports removes access to, removes access to the ability for participating sports with people who do not have the funds to be able to participate in club sports within our community. Both sports and music are integral to our kids finding good college placement. They're essential to a good college application and they make for better citizens and more better, well, more well-rounded citizens. Again, my husband and I will be watching everyone on the board supervisors and the school board to see who votes for what and how these issues are addressed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Woodyard and I live at four-twenty-five East Duke of Gloucester Street in Williamsburg. Uh, and I'm calling to say thank you for your continued support of the fine arts program, um, in the WJCC school district. Um, having a child at Berkeley Middle School has meant the world to us and they both, they participate in both orchestra and the theater. And I'm also a member of the National Junior Honor Society. And something that I've, I've recognized is that the majority of the kids who are our community leaders, who are part of National Junior Honor Society, um, are also part of either orchestra, band, or theater, or orchestra and theater. Um, and so I think that demonstrates that fine arts are not extra for WJCC. Uh, essentially, it really points to the fact that a science has proven that when you have kids who are involved in art, they have high test scores. And so we cannot continue our excellence, uh, in the area and when it comes to JCC schools without art. It is necessary in order to maintain that high academic achievement that our kids are so successfully getting because, again, of the fine arts. So please, again, thank you for your continued funding of the arts program because I think that without it, our community will suffer. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is George Potlin and I reside at one oh nine Colonel Frederick Jones, uh, in Williamsburg. I am calling to express my concern about potential cuts to both athletic and, uh, fine arts programs in the schools as a result of, uh, budget issues stemming from COVID nineteen. I have a middle school, uh, child and a, uh, high school child, uh, both of whom are significant participants in both athletics and in music. Uh, and both of them derive a significant amount of the value of their education from being able to be involved in those activities outside of the classroom. Um, although things like SOL testing focused on what happens inside the classroom, the whole person development of both my daughter and my son is in great parts from the things that they do on the athletic, uh, field or in, uh, fine arts programming. And I would-
Was that our last-
Hello, my name is Sarah Woodyard and I live at four-twenty-five East Duke of Gloucester Street in-
I'm calling to express my concern about potential cuts to both athletic and, uh, fine arts programs in the schools as a result of, uh, budget issues stemming from COVID nineteen. I have a middle school, uh, child and a, uh, high school child, uh, both of whom are, uh, significant participants in both, uh, athletics and in music. Uh, and both of them derive a significant amount of the value of their education from being able to be involved in those activities outside of the classroom. Um, although things like SOL testing focused on what happens inside the classroom, the whole person development of both my daughter and my son is in great parts from the things that they do on the athletic, uh, field or in, uh, fine arts programming. And I would urge the board to think very carefully, uh, before seeing convenient cuts to be made in athletics or in fine arts because of the significant value that students, uh, derive from those programs in terms not only of personal and individual, uh, growth, but also growth into being, uh, contributing citizens, uh, later on in life. So I would urge the board to, to, uh, be cautious of canceling or limiting athletics and fine arts programs, uh, because that is a significant point of value for any school system, including, uh, the Williamsburg Jame City County School. Thank you very much for your attention. Bye-bye.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Loy at one-two-three Lakewood Drive in Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm calling on behalf of, uh, the junior, excuse me, the Jamestown High School, um, band boosters. I'm an officer in that group as the president of the Berkeley Middle School Theater Booster Club, as well as the amazing music and arts teachers, volunteers, and students with Jame City County. I want to thank Dr. Heron and the school board for the difficult situation that I know that they're in and the tough choices that they need to make. I'm calling to advocate for the arts programs, uh, in the elementary school through high school level. These programs are phenomenal, uh, as you all know, uh, within Jame City County. There is plenty of scientific evidence that shows the need for music and arts and its link to success in STEM courses, uh, from the very beginning, uh, of their educational program to the very end. One of the things that we need to make sure that we do is recognize that while STEM is very important, the ability for abstract thought and the ability to create is now becoming more limited because of the decision to make the arts and music programs less necessary. The arts are not trivial. They teach you how to imagine, how to create. They are ultimately what makes the civilization and allows us to do good things within the STEM community. We're talking about award-winning and community-contributing organizations, uh, from each school. From the library arts programs to the Christmas parade, to the music in the parks that brings in bands and personnel from across the state and even outside of the state that contributes to the revenue that we need in our county. To the award-winning middle and high school theater programs at the local, regional, and state levels. It's also personal for me. We have two children, uh, that are in Jame City County Schools in the music and arts program and they have been associated for music and in music since they were eight months old and programs offered here in Williamsburg. Today, both are immersed in theater and band and play six, six instruments between them and they're only fifteen and twelve years old. I know you have difficult decisions and I am very grateful for the hard work that you do on our behalf. But I would ask, as, as difficult it is to find those dollars, to please not cut programs that are so instrumental to the creativity-
My name is Colissa Haderman. I live on two-fourteen Sandor West. I am a student at Warhol High School and I am currently a freshman. I'm a dear at art and it is my favorite part of the school day. I'm looking forward to do them, doing them again once school starts back. See, they are the main things I enjoy and I want to take AP classes next year to prepare myself for college and to improve. I base my future high school classes around being able to take AP classes and participate in art electives. Using these things would not only affect me negatively, but also my peers and the district. It also affects rising night students, people I've seen in plays who show so much talent. The arts are a big part of Warhol. Look at Mama Mia, Flowers to Algernon, an art home around the city. Look at the band, and that's just Warhol. There's so many talented people in all schools and these programs aren't just for fun. People get scholarships in psychology through DCA. Many, if not all, of the twenty-twenty graduates I know are going to DCA. Having these opportunities gives students the option, ha- having these opportunities gives students options for college. When I was in elementary school, almost all I did was some art-related things, art, plays, choir, instruments. It introduced me to so much. When I went to middle school, the theater department was an amazing introduction, both to students and the teacher. The art classes helped me improve so much and I can't imagine school without them. Using the elective is probably the worst thing to take away, especially after shutdown. What we don't need is boring classrooms. We need creative outlets that are still there for us to lean back on when school is tough. I've been looking forward to going back to art, even if the schools were uncomfortable and even if it was tedious at times. It was still a highlight of my day. And for me and a lot of other kids, AP classes are extremely important. Being able to get college credit before graduation is vital. And it makes it easier for a lot of kids to go to college, to get an advanced diploma, and to get recognized by colleges. I know these decisions are tough, but please consider the uses of students and our district. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe O'Brien, resident forty-seven eighty-one Bristol Circle here in Williamsburg, Virginia. Uh, my children attend Clara Bird Elementary School and all three of my children have been in Bright Beginnings. I just want my comments to be heard about the Bright Beginnings program. Uh, to keep it going, not only for my children, but for all those others in need of speech, behavioral, whatever it may have, but it's a huge tool for young youth success and it's a provider program that helps both families and individuals like mine as well. Um, I don't feel that this should be taken off of the school um, due to a scourge issue of not being able to gain money in to make this program be a success. Um, I think that's a lack of plan on everybody else, um, getting all their eggs in one basket and making sure that we have all this money from all these tours, depending on the tours that don't even live here, where I pay taxes here in Williamsburg. Um, I feel my taxes and everybody else's here is enough and sufficient enough to have a Bright Beginnings program like Jame City Schools as well as Newport News or Hampton area. And I, I, I feel that this program should be kept for the benefit of the children, benefit of the teachers, benefit of morale and well-being of our youth that is being raised up in our society. And thank you for hearing my response and have a great day. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, this is Stacey Townsend, uh, Jame City County, and I am calling to, um, speak on behalf of our families, which have been elementary school students, middle school students, and arriving high school students, um, for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Please do not, um, cut any fine arts, middle school sports, or foreign languages in the next year. I think we should be creative and look at other programs that are, um, particularly expensive for our district and possibly even look at cabling the subscriptions that we pay for the MAP assessment per the thirty-eight grade students, which is approximately eight thousand students. I think we can lean on our teachers to let us know, um, what programs are borderline or what students might need some extra work, but often times, teachers know the outcome of all of these standardized assessments, um, throughout the year before the students even go through the assessment. Uh, I think that would be one way to just alleviate some of that burden with the other programs that are beneficial for the mental and physical health of our students. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Karen Shagerman. I live at two-fourteen Sandor West, Newton, Williamsburg, Virginia. Um, I want to tell you the three-minute message about, um, the terrible decision that you guys have to make regarding this school budget and the cuts that you guys are gonna have to make. I don't envy your decisions at all, but you, these tough decisions you have to make. I do pray that you look at WJCC schools and look at the strengths and what sets us off and sets us apart from the rest of the divisions around us. And that's our arts department, our theater department, our music department. Warhol, Jamestown, all of those schools are absolutely incredibly filled with just talented individuals, talented students that have career goals of going into some kind of art field. Please be considerate of these students when you make these drastic cuts that you have to make and, um, just saddened that you have to make these cuts, but please be considerate of the art students and the music students and the theater kids. This, this is their life. You know, they were crushed when their plays were canceled because of COVID nineteen. And the thought of having to go back to school and not have a theater department, it's so crushing. It's devastating. It's crushing their dreams. And these kids have futures and goals of, of making a big or doing something amazing with their lives. Please consider these possibilities when you're thinking about making these cuts. Think about these children who've worked hard and dedicated months and months and hours and hours of their days and their time to their professing their craft. Uh, think about how amazing students we have at, at WJCC schools and how they are, who they are because of our arts program that starts in elementary school and just grows until they get to high school into this amazing program. What music and art and theater has done to the students at WJCC is immeasurable. Please don't take this away from our children. Please keep this as part of the, of the curriculum. Thank you for your time and I wish all the best for you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Bada. I live at one-twenty Spring Branch in Williamsburg, two-three-one-eight-five. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board and the teachers and staff at WJCC Public Schools for providing a good education to our choo- to children over the past seven years. And on a personal note, after homeschooling our children for the last few months, I can attest to the fact that education is a great equalizer and to have the privilege of being able to send my kids to WJCC public schools where highly educated teachers educate my children so that they all have a future and opportunities is worth funding. And since you mainly hear from parents when we are upset about something, I wanted to start off by saying thank you. Now, the reason for my call is over the budget cuts, the proposed budget cuts. And if they are to move forward, I would like to say that the items that I would not like to be cut would include not cutting teacher salaries or increasing their healthcare costs, not increasing class sizes, and not cutting art, music, computers, P E, and libraries. I just want to be your job of figuring out where to make the cuts, but if it could be to cut back on building projects as opposed to actual education of our children, I would see that as an improvement education. If there would be a way to reschedule building updates and save music and arts and smaller class sizes. In terms of funding, I had asked Mrs. Larson why we could not bring, or why we could not borrow some emergency funds, even at the risk of lowering our bond rating, but I have not heard back as of yet. I would also ask if someone was looking to using the millions of dollars in tourism funds. Some of that money, I believe, has already been reallocated by the city of Williamsburg for an emergency small business grant relief. That money is taxpayer money and if taxpayers ask for it to be used to fund the school budget, that should be an option to consider. There is money in this county and we have been saving it to make us look like a triple rated county and now we need to make sure that our schools stay at that high level. We need money to do this and we have the money. We just need the political will and some out-of-the-box thinking by our leadership. I realize this isn't your job to find funding for the budget, but you have the ear of the people who can make things happen. And so as leaders of our school and community, I ask if you keep asking questions of our elected leaders that they can, that we can find other funding options. And please do not cut programs that directly and negatively impact our students who are already behind from being out of school for the last few months. Also, please do not decrease teacher pay. I am, I'm not sure where we rate in the state or the nation in terms of teacher pay, but I doubt it equates to how highly we rank as a school system. Our school system is good and our teachers should be paid well because they are responsible for how well we are doing. Again, I thank you for bringing the budget cuts to the attention of families. Again, I thank you for bringing the budget cuts to the attention of families, and I thank you for the school system that is currently in WJCC. Please consider pushing for funding options, not cutting teacher pay and not cutting programs that directly impact our children's education. And again, I thank you for the work you do.
I believe that concludes our public comment. Um, I'd like to thank all of our citizens who called in and shared your thoughts. I would particularly like to thank you, um, for, um, your thoughts and prayers. For our school board, I would hope and ask that you also, um, pray for and think about our funding partners. So the city and, and the county, um, are the ones that fund the school system. We don't have the ability to raise revenue as a school board, so we, um, do make decisions about how we fund um, the school board based on the amount of money that our funding partners are able to give us. The school board does not have, um, an emergency fund or a contingency fund, and, and we don't get to decide if there's a five percent or a ten percent cut. That is up to our funding partners. Um, there is an opportunity, though, for the community to rally, as Supervisor Hippel said not too long ago in a board supervisor meeting, if, if the money's not there, then it's not there, right? So the issue is revenue. So there's an opportunity for the community to come together and, and let our policymakers and our funders know what we value um, as a community, and, and funding is a real issue, um, at the local, state, and, and national level. And so as I have communicated with citizens via email, I've made it really clear that there's an opportunity for us to put pressure, if you will, um, at all levels, recognizing that our local, um, funders um, give us the bulk of our budget, so approximately seventy-three percent comes from the local bodies, with twenty-six percent coming from the state and less than a half a percent coming from the federal government. So revenue is the issue. Um, and then I did just want to reiterate graduation. Dr. Heron, um, did speak to that at the beginning of the meeting. And so for folks who might just be tuning in, um, all of the details will be going out to families this Friday. Um, but then just repeat what Dr. Heron said, there will be an opportunity for students to walk across the stage in their regalia. Um, there'll be an opportunity for photographs, and while it will look distinctly different than, um, our graduation ceremonies in the past, I know staff have worked very hard, um, to make this a special day because it is so important for us to recognize the academic achievements and the hard work of, of all of our students. So thanks again for our citizens who called in, and I encourage you, I know many of you have mentioned this, but please share your thoughts um, and your feelings with the city council as well as, as the county board supervisors. So we're moving on to item seven point one, which is the CARES Act, um, impact on deferred compensation. This is a proposed agenda item, and then we will then be voting on it tonight. Um, this is essentially, um, just an, uh, an administrative item that we must do. The CARES Act allows our employees to tap into their, um, savings, and, um, we need to move on this so that they can legally do it per Mass Mutual. But I will let Dr. Heron or Mr. Baker give a more thorough overview of what I've just said.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will pass straight to Mr. Baker, who will explain the purpose of this item. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Oh, Mr. Baker, are you muted?
There we go. I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's like Verizon.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Uh, tonight I am going to discuss the deferred compensation in the CARES Act. On March twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty, Congress enacted the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities, or CARES Act. The CARES Act authorizes operational changes related to the amendments to specific retirement plans to allow the plan participants access to plan funds, provide relief for financial challenges caused by COVID nineteen pandemic. WJCC's four oh three B and four fifty-seven plans are administered by Mass Mutual and qualify for the CARES Act. The CARES Act provision provides active employee participants who may be facing coronavirus-related financial challenges the opportunity and the flexibility to access their deferred compensation funds more easily, and in some cases with no financial penalty. The act also contains a provision for retirees as well as qualified active employees for the flexibility to access, access and defer, or defer any required minimum distributions. So basically what this is gonna allow is just, uh, more of a fast track and simplify the bureaucracy to allow employees and retirees to have access to their funds. So we recommend approving the recommendations.
So I will start with Dr. Beers. Do you have any questions or comments about this? Dr. Beers, you may be muted.
Um, if a, um, uh, if somebody's employee in a school division certainly qualifies for the CARES Act, what if the person, another family member like the husband or the wife has lost his or her job, which puts a tremendous stress on their financial situation? Do they, are they still qualified to dip into that retirement?
Yeah, I, I believe they would be. So this would just give them the flexibility by law.
Right. Whoever is, okay, I, that's good. Okay, I, I didn't realize.
And, and I apologize. I didn't mention, again, this does not, uh, have any financial impact on the school division.
Right.
Uh, since the, the school division does not pay into, uh, Mass Mutual on our employees' debt.
So they're actually dipping into their retirement, which is not gonna be replaced.
It gives them that flexibility to have access to their own money, uh, if they qualify.
Yeah, okay.
Dr. Beers? What? You're, okay, uh, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms., Mr. Baker, do they have to, um, justify the, getting this, how they get this money, or how they qualify, or why they qualify?
They would. Uh, by law, they'd have to either be, uh, that they're, that they are found eligible, um, and that wouldn't be by us. It'd be actually through Mass Mutual and, and through the tax code.
And so by one of these, uh, five things here, they have to, or six things here, they had to justify that they had that, and that's, that's all the employee in Mass Mutual, nothing to do with us?
Correct. And it's, so right now, uh, up until this point, since, uh, uh, you all own the plan, and then H R, we administer the plan. Right now, by law, they're not allowed these, uh, flexibility, so we have to, uh, actually vote and give us that flexibility so our employees and retirees can take advantage of the tax law.
Uh, thank you. I'll support.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Baker? You're muted. Mrs. Young, you're muted.
I'm, I'm not anymore. Yeah, no, I do support it. I support that our employees and their families have access to the funds that they need.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Mr. Dowell, do you have comments or questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. No questions or comments for me. I fully support this, uh, effort to ease any restrictions so they can get whatever support they need at home. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Mrs. Hummel?
Uh, same as everyone else, totally support it. No questions.
Thank you. And Ms. Cook?
I too support it without question.
Thank you. Um, and my, my feelings are the same. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Um, Mr. Dowell, would you please move that we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do move that, uh, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, uh, approve or, yeah, approve the consent agenda as outlined in the agenda.
I second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Ms. Serza?
Madam Chair, just for the record, can we outline what's on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, item eight point one, approval of minutes from April twenty-first meeting, and item eight point two, personnel actions.
Madam Chair, I think we have a little bit of a problem with eight point two.
Yes, we do.
So, um, I'd, I'd modify, I'm, I motionally modified the consent agenda to approve only eight point zero one. If that's a, a friendly modification to the moment, a motion, so if the person who made the motion, the second agreed to, you can just.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we are just going to approve item eight point one, approval of minutes for April twenty-first. I'm gonna call that, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mrs. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Beers?
Hi.
Ms. Cook?
Hi.
Mr. Dowell?
Hi.
Ms. Hummel?
Hi.
Ms. Ombi?
Hi.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll move to approve the Personnel Action nine point zero two, this present, eight point zero two, as presented this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Dowell, would you second that?
I do second that.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Beers?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Hi.
Mr. Dowell?
Hi.
Ms. Hummel?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Ombi?
Hi.
Thank you. Now moving on to action items. Um, item nine point one, financial report, monthly bills and payroll for April two thousand twenty. Ms. Hummel, would you please move that we approve that?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ended April thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
And Ms. Cook, would you please second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Cook?
Um, yeah, if, um, Dr. Heron or Ms. Ewing could talk about the fund balance for child nutrition services, and then also just for the benefit of the public, um, uh, just kind of generally how we're doing in, um, in terms of shortfall of revenue.
Dr. Heron?
Yes, Ms. Ewing will answer the, the questions on the report this evening. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Good evening. Um, so for the operating fund, um, compared to our current year budget, we are looking at a revenue shortfall of approximately two point eight million at this point. Um, these projections include sales tax revenue received. Um, we've received the information already through May, so that is included in the projection. Um, our year-to-date projected revenue is approximately one hundred thirty-eight point eight million. For expenditures on the operating side, we are projecting expenditures to laying approximately one hundred and thirty-six point six million. So that would give us, um, a fund balance, if you will, of approximately two point one million in the operating fund. For the Child Nutrition Services Fund, we do have a fund balance that we've accumulated of approximately eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, um, based on our projected revenue for food service and our projected expenditures for the current year. We are anticipating expenditures to exceed revenue by approximately five hundred and ninety-five thousand. So we are anticipating a decline in our fund balance for the Child Nutrition Services Fund. That would leave us a fund balance at the end of the year estimated at approximately two hundred and seventy-four thousand at this time.
Do you happen to know, um, that seems low over, over the years? Is that kind of a low mark for this division? That fund, fund balance of two seventy-four?
That, that would be a, a low fund balance compared to prior years. Um, I will say we're fortunate that we do have a fund balance in the Child Nutrition Services Fund. Some, especially smaller divisions, don't have that and are having to cover shortfalls from their operating fund.
I see. Um, and then I know, I'm not asking you to answer this right now, but I would like an answer, uh, at some point. Um, I believe the fund balance, um, factors into whether or not we have to raise lunch prices every year. Um, and so I'm wondering if this expenditure now to, I presume, the reason our fund balance is reducing is so that we can feed children uh, during the school closure. Um, and so if that reduction in fund balance requires us to raise lunch prices, I just think we need to be transparent about that as yet another potential impact of this pandemic. So if we could get that information in.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Are there additional questions for Ms. Ewing?
Uh, yeah, uh, Madam Chair, uh, well, one of the reasons why our fund balances, uh, our, 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 our end-of-year money is so low is that we've already taken two point seven million dollars of revenue out of our, our, uh, projected balance. And so if we took the two point seven and added it to the, the five hundred or so, it's, that's about the normal of where we, where we come in at the end of the year as far as, um, and the end-of-year balances, right?
Is that accurate, Ms. Ewing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Well, so, so we're, we're lower than we have been in previous years because we've already taken two point seven million of revenue out of our budget. And so normally we come in in the two million, right at the high one million dollar range, and that's where we would have come in, um, had we kept that, uh, had we kept that two point seven million of revenue in our budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there additional comments or questions for Ms. Ewing? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial report. Hearing no, no further, Ms. Ms. Serza. Oh, you're muted, Janet. You're still muted.
Sorry. Ms. Hummel?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mrs. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Beers?
Hi.
Ms. Cook?
Hi.
Mr. Dowell?
Hi.
Ms. Ombi?
Hi. Okay, moving on to action item nine point two, CARES Act, impact on deferred compensation. Dr. Beers, would you please move that we approve that?
Uh, yeah, wait a minute. Let me take it back screen here. Okay. All right, okay, we're the, okay, but, um, I move that we, uh, approve the amendments to the plans for the proposed operational changes to WJCC's PS plans pursuant to the CARES Act, when appropriate, for the school board to vote on said amendments. Is that right? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Um, Ms. Young, would you second that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Hi.
Ms. Hummel?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mrs. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Beers?
Hi.
Ms. Cook?
Hi.
And Ms. Ombi?
Hi.
Okay, uh, moving on to item ten point one, the budget update. Um, before I punt it back to you, Dr. Heron, I know that Mr. Kelly has a commitment at nine P M., and so I'll just let everyone know that he will be signing off at nine o'clock. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, yeah, that is correct. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, um, Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, I just realized, do Mr. Kelly and I need to make statements?
Uh-oh, because of the budget. Yes. Mr. Kelly, are you still there?
Uh, no, I will not be there, so I don't have to make a statement.
Okay. He's leaving. Okay.
Sorry, I just.
Goodbye, Mr. Kelly.
Good day.
All right, so Ms. Cook? Please read your statement.
Thank you. I apologize for not thinking of that sooner.
Me neither. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've asked Ms. Ewing to give us a very brief overview of the projections for next year, pre-COVID nineteen and then post-COVID nineteen, just to give a, a general sense of public awareness of what's going on and where we are with the budget. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening, we'll be reviewing our revenue outlook for the fiscal year twenty-one budget as it compares to our current fiscal year twenty budget. Prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic, our revenue outlook included an increase over the current fiscal year twenty budget of six point six million dollars. This included increased funds from the state due to rebenchmarking and full funding from our funding partners of our proposed budget. These additional funds were going to support an employee These additional funds were going to support an employee raise of 3%, a required increase in our VRS contributions, positions to support teaching and learning such as special education teachers, English as a second language teachers, school counselors, behavior intervention specialists to support the growing needs of our students, and funding for additional dual enrollment courses in health sciences and other instructional programs to support our students. Unfortunately, due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, our revenue situation has drastically changed. There's still uncertainty surrounding the impact on the state and local economy, so some assumptions will need to be made in order for budgets to be adopted by July 1st. The current scenario being considered by the James City County Board of Supervisors is a reduction to their proposed fiscal year 21 budget of 10%. This reduction is proposed to be shared with the school division on a 52% schools, 48% county, based on our share of their budget. This 10% scenario is a $7.3 million reduction to the county's proposed budget for our operating fund and includes an assumption of a 40% reduction in sales tax revenue. This chart shows our updated state revenue after the General Assembly's reconvene session at the end of April, as well as the impact of the county's 10% reduction scenario as compared to our current fiscal year 20 budget. State revenue has decreased by approximately $885,000 from our original proposed budget. These state changes include maintaining school counselor ratios at the current fiscal year 20 level, which is 455 to 1 at elementary school, 370 to 1 at middle school, and 325 to 1 at high school, and an allotment of funding for a compensation supplement and an unallotment of the additional funding for the at-risk add-on. While we are still anticipating receiving an increase in state revenue of $3.8 million, there is a portion of our total state revenue that is funded from lottery proceeds. For us, this amounts to $3.4 million. Since there is still uncertainty about the impacts of COVID-19 on this revenue source, we are also assuming a 40% reduction in this funding as well. The impact of the county's 10% reduction scenario when compared to our current fiscal year 20 budget is a reduction of $5.5 million in local funding between the county and city combined. Factoring in all of these adjustments, we are looking at a reduction to our current year budget of $3.1 million. Here you will see mandatory and essential expenditure increases that we know we will have next year, which amounts to approximately $1.4 million without the special education staffing needs. We are still reviewing our staffing needs in this area and do not have a cost estimate at this time. When you factor these expenditure increases with the revenue reduction, we will need to reduce our expenditures by at least $4.5 million from our current year budget. The impact of this reduction in our funding will be felt across the entire division. We have prepared a handout that has been provided, and here you will see some of the impacts from this reduced funding, which include a reduction in central office administrators and support staff. Families can expect an increase in class size across all levels. Teaching loads at middle school and high school will increase. There will be a reduction in teaching assistance at the elementary schools. There will likely be an elimination of middle school athletics and other extracurricular programs will also be affected. In addition, most department and school budgets will be reduced up to 10% from current funding levels. As 85% of the budget is in personnel and benefits, a reduction in funding of this magnitude will result in a reduction in force of approximately 20 to 25 people. We are trying to manage this through natural attrition by not filling vacancies that are currently open. Regardless, we will begin next year understaffed in many areas as a result of this. Upcoming dates in this year's budget process include James City County budget adoption on June 9, followed by the City of Williamsburg budget adoption on June 11, and School Board adoption of the budget on June 16. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Ms. Cook?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ewing and Dr. Heron. I appreciate it very much. That's very helpful and added some clarity and actually reduced the number of questions that I have. I do want to thank you for being so transparent with the public. It has generated a lot of feedback to our to our City Council and Board of Supervisors. I hope that it's also generated a lot of feedback to our state-level officials because they also need to hear that cutting education at this time is not, not okay. You know, we asked for in excess of 30 new positions next year. All of them justified with data and all of them conservatively justified, I guess I should say. So at this time, cutting is really counterintuitive and not in the best interest of students. So I guess I have several questions first about process. Just essentially to the public, what I'd like to say is that now, between now and June 11, which is when the Board of Supervisors and City Council will have adopted their budgets, is really the time to talk about funding in general for public education. And so I encourage people listening to continue to do that and share your thoughts. And also, please don't forget your state delegate and senators as well. After the 11th, between the 11th and 16th, that's when it's really time to talk to us about arts, athletics, class size, and those really programmatic things because that's when we're going to be taking account of that because the funders fund and we decide how to allocate that within our budget. But Ms. Ewing, for you, I have a question about the state funding. Could you give us a sense of the history of state funding for the school division? In other words, have we recovered from the original cuts from the Great Recession yet? Do you have any perspective to offer the public on that? Because we are on the bottom quartile of funding for education in the state, in the country. And, you know, thank God for Mississippi, right? Because they're the only one that needs us. So could you speak to that a little bit, please, for the public?
In 2009, our state revenue budget was approximately $32.8 million. At that time, the average per pupil at that time was $3,199. Our fiscal 20 budget is just over $35 million. And on a per pupil basis, that's $3,058.
Okay. So the per pupil spending from the state has gone down in the last decade. So that, I'm sorry? Is that correct?
Yes.
And yet our student needs have gone up, and that doesn't include inflation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear that the state really has not been doing their job. Another thing that has come up is, let me, let me back up. I'd like to just clarify for the public where the buckets, if you will, that the localities spend. So could you talk about that a little bit, just about debt service? And then general fund, where money comes from their general fund, and then also sales tax for education as a pass-through? Could you talk about those kind of three buckets, if you will, and then and talk about our community's reliance on sales tax and why that might be hitting us a little bit harder than some other localities, please?
Sure. So for the county, they have debt service that, for debt, they've acquired for school projects. So they have to pay that each year, and there can't be any reductions to those payments. Their general fund is supported by various tax revenues, the majority of that being real estate taxes, I believe. They also support our CIP fund through either acquiring debt or by using cash, and that cash comes from their general fund as well. The state sales tax for education, it's 1 and 1/8% that flows to us through the localities based on statewide sales tax collections.
So in this case, the majority of the cut really has come from sales tax for education in both the city and the county. Is that correct? So it's not, they're not cutting from, in fact, the city has held level, has offered to hold level from their general fund. And the county has has cut with about $2 million from their general fund. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the, again, the majority comes from sales tax for education, which as Ms. Ombi said a little bit earlier, we kind of, we can't conjure that money. If sales are not happening, if people are not coming here to enjoy the area, those dollars are not there. So I just wanted to be, to be clear about that and that that's the genesis of the cuts. And can you talk a little bit also what you've heard anecdotally from other divisions and why their experience might be a little bit different from ours based on how their localities are funded and how they fund education, please?
Sure. So for us, you know, the majority of our funding comes from the localities, approximately 63%. When you look at other places like York, Newport News, and Hampton, their locality funds about 35% of their budget. And so the majority of their funding comes from the state, about 65. So we're the complete opposite when you look at the funding locality versus state compared to surrounding divisions.
So essentially, this is a perfect storm because we are a wealthy community. We are designated by the state to pay more for local, for public education. And then we are also reliant on the tourism economy, which generates sales tax. And so that pass-through money, which comes to our community at a higher level than other communities, has dropped more at a higher rate, if you will. So it's kind of a perfect storm for us right now, which is why we're experiencing this. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement, yes.
So, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. This is, again, not the time to cut education. Our students are going to come back to us with more social, emotional, and educational needs than ever before. And, but I did want to shine a light on what the localities are going through right now. And as Ms. Ombi said before, we really need to look at revenue because if we're going to try to protect our school division from these kinds of ups and downs in the future, we need to, we need to look at that seriously and make that commitment on a local level unless and until the state decides to fix their really broken system. So that's all I have to say, Ms. Ombi.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel? You're still muted.
Yeah, I was just trying to get my mouse down there to unmute myself. Well, I was going to ask about our different localities because, but it looks like Kira already asked that, so thanks. I'd like to ask a little bit about this emergency fund that I keep hearing about and whether there is an emergency fund that we're not, that the county is not able to tap into? Or are they able to tap into it? Could, Ms. Ewing, could you just explain what you know about that?
I'm not sure. I know much about their emergency fund, but essentially it would be their fund balance that they've accumulated over the years that they are only looking to go into that for like natural disasters or hurricanes and what have you.
Okay, um, gosh, I just think of this, what's happening to us right now is above, not on par with a natural disaster, but above a natural disaster and its impact to our system. And along with what everyone else has said, our needs are greater due to what's happening with COVID-19 and the fact that we would have to be cutting services, cutting any of our budget when our needs are even greater is just a cruel, a cruel situation. And I think that we do need to look at revenue. I think if, if there's not money there, we need to look at ways to get money into our system. And that's not a very popular subject to talk about. But if our locality has been supported for many, many years and enjoyed low taxes for many, many years because of our tourism and our hospitality taxes, restaurant taxes, et cetera, now might be the time where we need a special assessment to help raise revenues so that we can get through the next year or so. But then again, that's, that's a school board person talking when my, my concern is the great need I see in our school system and the fact that any of these cuts are just so, so horrible.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Dowell?
Madam Chair, Ms. Ewing, I appreciate your, this report you put together for us to really helps me kind of see that, the picture from a different lens. You might not be able to answer this question formally, I understand that. I'm curious, I think the first wave of the CARES funding, the CARES grants, I think we are expecting to see about 1.2 million of that once it sifts through the state's hands. And that 1.2 million, we can't use that for operational purposes. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Am I right that there's a second wave of CARES funding that the federal government's putting through so that we could use it for operational purposes? Are you aware of that and where that might be in the big picture?
There's a HEROES Act that is currently going through, but I don't have any details regarding that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
The details regarding how that is used are, will only happen once it actually becomes available. And the CARES Act, there are some guidelines around the use of it, but we were strongly advised not to use it to fill a hole in an operating budget because next year we won't have the money. It's actually first-time, one-time funds.
Thank you, thank you.
And Dr. Heron, could you add, we just, you just received additional, or school divisions have just received additional guidance from the U.S. Department of Education about that funding that it could be reduced?
Yes, we've received some guidance that private schools in the area, the distribution is not under the rules of Title I, but under the rules of Title II. And Ms. Ewing may be able to speak to that better, but basically private schools are eligible for some of those funds as well. With Title I, it would be private school students who are on free and reduced lunch. Under Title II, it would be all students in private schools. So we actually could get significant less of that money in our actual school division.
I didn't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. And then just adding on to that before I cycle around to Mrs. Young and Dr. Beers. Ms. Ewing, could you speak to, so the CARES Act has several different funding prongs. And so Mr. Dowell just mentioned the potential 1.2 that we might receive that would come directly to schools. But it's my understanding the county also has a potential to receive approximately $6.7 million, and they'll receive about half of that around June 1st.
I don't think we can really speak to the county's funding and what they receive. But I were aware of funding being given to the county, but it's really not our prerogative to speak to those funds.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Young?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that, Ms. Ewing, that you did to prepare this for us. It's kind of bleak, but I think it's better to know. But, and I want to thank Ms. Cook for going through almost all the questions that I had. I think my concern for this is if there are additional funds that may be used for operating. that, that may be used for operations. And we, but there, there may be, but we have no clue right now whether or not that would happen. Is that, is that true?
The CARES Act funds that we can speak to ideally should not be used for operations. They are for one-time expenditures related to COVID nineteen.
So, I mean, because one of the things that was brought up by one of our citizens was that if we do go back to school, there's going to be an increased need for cleaning, for sanitizing for, and that's going to be an ongoing thing, I think, for some time. So the fact that we do need more money, possibly that money could be used for something like that. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we're beginning to look at what that money will be used for right now. And yes, you are correct, there will be, have to be a more extensive cleaning in our buildings. We're trying to navigate and think about how we transport students, how we bring them into classrooms with social distancing in place. So we've got lots of thinking to do, lots of options to consider depending on where we are in the phases defined by the governor.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Heron. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just like a, a quick comment. If, if I look at the numbers that Renee put up there, it's, we took about four, five, four point five million dollars. And I don't see why the county, the board of supervisors can't see their way through pulling some of the money. Certainly not all of it, but some of the money out of that fund that they have been building over the years. Because it is a natural disaster and it has real economic consequences, educational consequences. We really need those funds so that we don't lose positions. So that we can provide the programs, the educational programs that we need to provide. And, and I know it's probably unpopular and I know some of the county supervisors are going to get an, an email from them because I'm suggesting that. But I'd rather be brought to bear to use some, that's a small amount of it. Four point five million, but it's so important to us. And, um, I, I, you know, I can't, I can't say that enough. I will also say, Ms. Ewing, I, I'm always impressed how well you are able to keep up with the ongoing financial conditions at the fed, state and local level. And I'm, I'm very impressed. I wish it wasn't so bleak, but hearing the bleakness from you, it doesn't, it doesn't sound quite so bad. But thanks again so much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. And then I just need to reiterate everything my colleagues have said and just want to say again to the public. The school board began our budget process back in January and we moved into this process very hopeful. As Ms. Cook mentioned, there were approximately thirty positions, new positions that were directly related to equity, English language learner teachers, special education teachers and aides, much-needed counselors, things that would have really impacted all of our students and, and most importantly, those students who are struggling. And so we went from being hopeful, where we thought we might begin to edge out of kind of the recession from two thousand and eight to, to now we're looking at budget cuts. So really truly a one eighty. And so this is a rally, rallying cry to the broader community. It is about funding and it is about, it is about revenue. And so encourage folks to continue to advocate for that.
Well, I think, and you know, I, I think, Ms. Ombi, the other thing is there are going to be changes over the course of the summer. We don't know, the county doesn't know how much money is going to be, come available through the state. And it, you know, some of that may change. I'm, you know, I'm kind of an optimist here. This is not going to go on forever. And, and when I talk about the four point five, that's a temporary one time. You know, I'm hopeful that things will, you know, pick up during that, you know, that, that, the twenty-one fiscal year. But it's like, right now, it is really, and you're absolutely right. We're, we've cut so much stuff to the bone as it is, and there are going to be consequences for teachers and for students. I'm just thinking that, you know, maybe there's a way to at least get the, the four point five from the county.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I would have to agree. And as, as again, as, as folks have said, Ms. Cook has said, we, our conditions on the ground have been ever-changing, right? So the needs of our students have, have continued to increase in the last decade. But we know that what we are going to experience in the fall is going to be something that we have never quite experienced or thought of. So that knowledge gap is going to be phenomenal and not in a good way. So this is not the time to balance budgets on the backs of our children. And I, and I know that our funding partners don't want to do that. I, I think there are still some options out there. And so again, encourage the public to, to help brainstorm and help our funding partners think outside of the box about some of those, those funding impacts because the county is responsible and the city for funding many things, right? Parks, rec, firefighters, police, the libraries, all of those things are important to the quality of our life. I am a school board member, and so I guess I am biased. How, I, I, I do think that not all cuts are equal, right? So cutting our students is very different than possibly cutting another public service that, that that, that serves the broader community. And I know those are tough decisions to be made, but our, our students really are our future and that's not cliche. It really is not. Okay, moving on.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just one more thing. You know, we've talked about the needs of our kids and how they're going to increase, and that's absolutely true. But we heard a lot in the public comments today also about the excellence that we have. And we have excellent arts programming, exceptional athletic, athletic programs, amazing academics. And, you know, and that, that is the data bear out when you look at, we, we are have been fully accredited for thirteen years in a row, is that right, Dr. Heron? And we are the largest school division that can boast that in the state of Virginia. And we are top-notch. And so I, you know, the, the county and the city fund us immensely. They really do. But when you compare how much they, how much more they fund us beyond what they're supposed to fund us, there's room for improvement. There really is. And so we are not funded commensurate with our quality. And so I just wanted to state that, that there is room to go, to go up. And I hope that the local government will do that over time. We're caught, as I said earlier, in a perfect storm and this has caught us all off guard. But if we can't fix it this year, there's next year and the year after. There is time to raise revenue and invest more, more robustly commensurate with the quality that we're providing. Because we can't do it on, on, uh, cutting to the bone like this for too much longer. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Ms. Young?
I just wanted to say, because, because of the way that our funding is, is dictated to us by the state, so much of our, so much more of our funding comes from local, our localities. Because as, as Ms. Cook stated, we're, we're perceived to be a wealthy school district. But when something like this happens, you think about the devastation to our budget compared to or some of the areas around us. It's kind of stunning that, that because we are so dependent upon tourism and the, the sales tax lottery and everything else. I think this is a good indication that maybe the state needs to think a little bit differently about how schools are funded. Because this is not, this is not right, that this, this, our school district has been impacted so, so greatly. So.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Are there closing thoughts on the budget update? Okay, hearing none, we will now move on to item ten point one. Mr. Lambusta is going to speak to stop-arm camera. Dr. Heron, if you wanted to give some information before we pass it on to Mr. Lambusta?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ombi. Mr. Lambusta, Director of Transportation is going to bring us some information on a stop, stop-arm camera initiative that's been in the works for some time. One of the key things that are important to us is the safety of our students. And this is one initiative that I know you'll be interested in hearing about because it really does impact that. Mr. Lambusta, I'll pass it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron. Tonight, I will briefly provide background information, data matrix that reflect the need for stop-arm camera initiative, explain the process and timeline. This initiative supports strategic plan goal four strategy two, which is to ensure a fully integrated approach to safety and security. In an effort to improve student safety and enforce Virginia Code, which prohibits passing of a school bus that is stopped, the Transportation Department has collaborated with the county and city to create ordinances that will support the stop-arm camera initiative. In two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen across the U.S., six students were killed in loading and unloading accidents. In addition, a two thousand nineteen survey by the National Association of State Directors of Pupil Transportation in thirty-nine states showed over ninety-five thousand violations in a single day. This school year, our bus drivers reported stop-arm violations up until March thirteenth. At that time, there were two thousand two hundred and seven unofficial violations. Violation breakdown for JCC and Williamsburg are shown on the screen. The average number of violations for the first full six months, September through February, were three hundred and thirty-seven a month, with a projected violation estimate of over three thousand by the end of the school year. How does this work? External and internal cameras capture the stop-arm violations. Once a potential violation is captured, it's automatically sent to the vendor and police for review and processing. If the violation is approved by a sworn officer of the law, it's sent back to the vendor for final processing and mailed to the violator for payment of two hundred fifty dollars with a citation that may look very similar to what you see on the screen. The pictures on this slide show the clarity of stop-arm camera images during the best and worst conditions. As you can see on the left, during bright sunny days, license plate was clearly captured on the approaching white vehicle. And on the right, during a rainy day, the license plate is clearly visible on the gray Volkswagen. This slide outlines our next steps. Of significant note are the PR announcement, August twenty twenty, the citation grace period, September twenty twenty, and the official launch in October twenty twenty. I believe this is a much-needed program that will greatly enhance the safety of our children. I appreciate you allowing me to present this initiative and I'd be very happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lambusta. Dr. Beers? Oh, you're muted, Dr. Beers.
No, I, I just would say I very much support this. I see a, a number of those violations and and I'm really glad to see that, that we're, we're getting tougher about that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Ms. Young? Mrs. Mrs. Young? Are you muted, Mrs. Young?
We may have lost Ms. Young off camera. If you move to the next, next board member, come back.
Okay, okay. And Mr. Dowell?
Mr. Lambusta, thank you so much for this report and the information. I'm, I've been looking forward to, to seeing this being implemented for a long time, having been a police officer and responding to these worst-case events in a student's life, so, and in a family's life. So I absolutely will be supporting this one. Question though, as far as the maintenance, regular maintenance of, of these cameras, what does that look like? Is there, is, is the bill entirely on the school division? Is that shared with the county? What does that look like?
So a- as far as maintenance, that that is part of what the, the contract will be. The contract will maintain the equipment. As far as the, the cost for the maintenance itself, a lot of that stuff is, is going to be taken care of through revenues that, that are gained through some of the violations.
And so we won't see that directly? I guess the cost to, to maintain would be seen by us directly that'll go through the police department, through the county?
Yes. So, so what happens, the, and if you, are you talking about the, the process itself? Or are you talking about the, the, the cost of the program?
Cost of the program.
Okay. Once again, the, the cost of the program, the, the way the, the industry standard is that you have the, the revenue that comes in, two hundred fifty dollars per violation. That revenue is, then it pays for the maintenance. It pays for the, the upkeep of the equipment. And once again, with the industry standard, that is then, after that, the maintenance and after the usage of that equipment is taken care of, there is also a, what they call a revenue-sharing model. So you have different companies out there that will take a certain percentage of the revenue and then share that revenue with the, the, the school system, the, the remainder of it. And there's different, different versions as far as what the percentage is. So that's the way the program is paid for and that's the way many of these different vendors work.
Thank you. And just one last question. Do you have data or evidence to show what, how the trend will respond to a stop-arm camera?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, the, this is the vendor's data because of data that they have accumulated for many years of doing this with different school systems. Part of what they look at is their data indicates, for instance, within the first year of implementing this program, that we can expect that violation should go down as much as twenty-eight percent. Additionally, they indicate that anybody who has gotten a, a violation the first time, there's a ninety-four percent chance they're not going to get another violation. So people start to learn, you can't be doing this. As we were going through the last couple of years, I've had my people keeping data on this because I wanted to prove a point. We needed this program. And, and I've had some of my drivers who just plain gave up because the same people would keep running the bus. They would keep running the stoparms now. And I will tell you, James City County Police and Williamsburg Police were great. They supported us every time we needed them. But, you know, they can't be everywhere all the time. And that's why this, this program is going to be so helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Lambusta.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Before I move on to a couple of other board members, just wanted to build on to what Mr. Dowell said. So is it fair to say then, at least for the first year, this is budget neutral with? Mr. Lambusta?
So. Right. So for, for the first year, once again, the way the program works is the, the program is paid for through revenues that are collected. And, and if we don't have the revenue that comes in, okay, to pay for the technology, the maintenance and so forth, then we, we do not have to pay anything in accordance to what we are finding out. Now, I will tell you, we are still in the midst of negotiations. We're still in the midst of, of looking at certain other aspects. So there's other things I can't really go too, too deep into. But that is the, that is the industry standard, is where it's the revenue that pays for the equipment, that pays for the cellular data, that pays for the maintenance and so forth. And then once that stuff is paid off, you have a certain percentage that is shared between the vendor and the school system or county, and however they, they choose to use that. And once again, part of the industry standard is also, if you don't, you know, because these people, I mean, a lot of times, they're betting on the fact that you're going to have enough violations that are going to pay for the equipment, for everything else, and enough to where there's going to be, there's going to be revenue involved in it. And the bottom line is, I will tell you, bottom line personally, I know we're talking about revenue and, you know, being in a tight situation. I mean, we're doing this primarily for the safety of the kids. You know, personally, I couldn't care less about the revenue. As long as the kids are safe, that's what we're doing it for. But this is the way the program is supposed to work. But once again, we are still in the midst of looking at different vendors and negotiating and so forth.
I'm sure the board that whatever we pursue on this will be cost-neutral to the division in our current environment. We're focused on the safety of students.
Thank you, Mr. Lambasta and Dr. Heron. Ms. Young, did you have comments or questions for Mr. Lambasta? Oh, you're on mute. You're still muted.
Okay, I hope I'm off now. Yep. I did have a question, but can you come back to me in just a minute? I'm still trying to keep my machine is charging.
Okay, 10-4. Ms. Cook?
I do not have any questions. I appreciate the hard work you've put into this. I know it's taken a long time and it's complex, but I'm excited to stop people from doing this. It's, I'm amazed.
Thank you, Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel, and then I'll come back around to you, Ms. Young.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for all your work with this. I just, when you say revenue-neutral, I just, I'm being hypersensitive right now about our budget. Do we have to outlay any money first, and then we get money back, or by?
No, we don't, we don't outlay any kind of money. It's, the way this works is the equipment, the services are provided, and then we will start the program. And once again, the way it works is it will pay as the vendors believe because of their experience with other school districts that the revenue itself will pay for the equipment, for the manpower, for the maintenance, for everything else. And they're pretty, the different vendors that we've talked to, they're pretty confident that there's going to be enough revenue for them, enough to pay for the equipment, everything else, and most likely enough to take care of any kind of revenue sharing.
If I may jump in just quickly, I'll give you a brief example. We have 160 buses, they're 18 days in the month, and their rate of ticketing is about 20%, which means there are 576 tickets issued every month, times $250. So you're looking at about $144,000, and out of that, we would have to pay revenues and we would get a share of, after the revenues are paid. So as you can see, it works itself out pretty much.
Okay, thanks so much. I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you. Mrs. Young?
I just had a question. Currently, people that are violating passing vests and that, they're ticketed now from what Marcella's just said. Is that correct?
We, there are, there are several that are ticketed with the numbers that were provided, I believe, were estimates. The information now that I also provided, those are unofficial reports from the bus drivers. However, yes, James City County Police and Williamsburg Police have been ticketing people.
Okay, is there going to be, I'm not paying devil's advocate because I do think they deserve a ticket if they pass the school bus, especially because they're jeopardizing student safety. But is there going to be some kind of write-up in the newspaper that?
Yes.
Well, let's let our citizenry know that they're under scrutiny.
Where, as a matter of fact, we, I mean, part of what we're looking at, we had done, as a matter of fact, last year, we had done a public service address with both the Williamsburg Police and the James City County Police, try to get the word out to cut down on these violations. Last year, we had about 1,200. This year, as you could see, we were projecting over 3,000 by the end of the school year, had we finished. But there will be a public service campaign that will come out. They will be giving people an opportunity to educate them, to know it's coming out. And then, during the month of September, as the timeline showed, we will actually be doing the grace period. So people will be caught, people will get citations that are not going to be official citations, but it's going to be, here's your warning, and then, starting in October, we're going to start, where the system is going to start actually sending official citations out to violators.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambasta. I know that Mr. Kelly had to leave at nine o'clock, but he had thoughts about the site, about the grace period, and wondering if we could just educate and then move straight into ticketing.
We could certainly, I mean, we could, we could go ahead and adjust it if we need to. But I think most, most, from what I have seen, school systems will give some kind of a grace period. It doesn't have to be a month long. It could be two weeks, or however, you know, you decide to proceed.
Maybe that could be adjusted, maybe.
Yes.
Maybe a shorter grace, maybe a shorter grace period.
It could be, yes. We can do that.
Okay. Are there additional thoughts or comments for Mr. Lambasta? Thank you so much. This is important to ensure our children's safety. I do think, Mr. Dowell, did you have one more question?
I was just saying, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lambasta, for your work service. I really am looking forward to it. Appreciate it.
We are too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to board matters. 11.1, board members' comments and requests. Dr. Beers, I'll start with you.
All righty. I appreciate the budget update and how WJCC is functioning in spite of COVID-19. I appreciate also the comments by parents and teachers that I heard tonight, and I've also heard during the day. We are facing an unknown, but very different future in producing quality educational experiences for us. Programs and positions in WJCC schools require sufficient funds to be successful. The superintendent and the staff are pursuing every available avenue to reduce our expenses without reducing the quality of our schools, and that is an incredible challenge. This is the time, therefore, I believe, the County Board of Supervisors has to release some of their funds for our students and our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Young?
I was just going to thank all of the citizens tonight who called, who called the phone number and appreciate, thank them for their comments. I mean, many of them had the same concern about extra, about the fine arts programs, graduation. I know that when one of the comments was about teacher salary, which is always high on my priority list. I'm very concerned about our teachers, but I appreciate them taking the time to call in. And I thank Dr. Heron and her staff, and especially Ms. Ewing for that budget update today. I think that the more transparent we are with our citizenry, the more they can understand. I do want to say, I did have the opportunity of working with Sherry Triff and the CTE Committee. I'm very confused right now. CTE Committee, and we're helping them finalize the school report from them that's going to come later this year. That's a very dedicated group of people that want to see our students have as many opportunities in learning about careers and participating in internships and everything. So we'll get a chance to hear from them later. But anyway, I do hope, I mentioned earlier the locality index, that index, you can see how that has impacted our school system. And maybe that needs to be reexamined, or in some way, maybe the state for those areas that are like ours, that we rely on the money from our locals area. Maybe they need to put aside some money in case anything like this happens again. Because this is certainly unprecedented, and I understand that. We may be looking at this again in the fall. Anyway, but thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Mr. Dowell?
Oh, you're muted.
It got me. I was doing good. I too wanted to thank all the callers. You know, I almost had to turn my screen off, listening to some of the students talk about what the year's been like for them and what they might be missing. But I thank all the callers, that the parents and the students for lending their voice to this process, as difficult as it is, and will continue to be. Also, to our presenters, giving us a lot to think about as it relates to how we return to classrooms. Thank you for lending us your evening. I didn't want to talk about, briefly, it's been a long evening for everybody, but briefly talk about the 10% versus 15% versus, you know, what could have been, and look at it kind of circularly. Kind of began by stating the obvious, that there's really no really great option to cutting funding that the Board of Supervisors have before them. And Kier really kind of hit it on the nose and kind of led us to understanding the real challenges that we face within James City County, that perfect storm that she illuminated for us, why this is so challenging here within James City County, our school division in the LCI, and why we, because we look so affluent, we should be able to weather the storm. But we're so reliant on different tax measures, and so here we are faced with this incredible challenge. I'm thankful, if I could put it that way, 10% is going to be an incredible challenge for our students and our teachers and our staff and our administrators. Fingers crossed, we can, you know, we can see a better outlook by June 9th. But, you know, where we were looking at a potential 15% reduction in our operating funding would have been catastrophic, and I think we all know that. So I do thank the Board of Supervisors, they've talked about, you know, the perfect storm and the different, the different public goods that they have to weigh in on and balance funding. I thank them for leaning on that 10% side and giving us a fighting chance here. You know, it's the difference between 20 and 25, as we've read, as we've seen through Dr. Heron's, her, what are we talking about here, her reduction scenarios, different between 20 and 25 full-time employees, worth is, you know, upwards of 100 losing those. And so that's just, 15% would have been catastrophic. I also want to ask and thank our funding partners, the Board of Supervisors and the City Council. As you consider greater needs, that you consider greater needs of the school system as you're developing different revenue streams, whatever those look like, we've talked about what might come from the federal government through your cares, through the, through local cares, funding, different opportunities that the Board of Supervisors, our local funding partners develop, really consider the needs of our school system, our needs. You've heard it, we've heard it, we've talked about it ad nauseam tonight and over the weeks, responding to emails and phone calls, what school is going to look like when we return post-COVID, and still responding to COVID. Cleaning and disinfecting will look different than what's been routine. Social distancing in the classroom will be a bigger part of our reopening strategy. Return to school after isolation has a potential to create high-stress learning and teaching environments. Yet, we'll be asking teachers to manage these environments with more students and less resources. These are facts. These are not, you know, cautious assumptions. We know this, we know this, looking at the 10% reduction scenario that we're faced with right now. And so I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors, our funding partners, that as you are developing new revenue streams, that you will continue to consider the needs of the school system post-COVID. And then, just my last thought, as it pertains to future funding, there's been a concern, that's kind of caught my ear, caught my attention, and I have shared it with certain Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors may choose to appropriate funds based on a future outlook of revenue strategy, rather than committing to a monthly figure. And this is concerning to me. We know that when classroom instruction resumes, Dr. Heron, we haven't had to implement many new structures and strategies due to COVID and a depleted economy. We cannot effectively do so if we are left to ask what school funding looks like for the next future. Really concerned about what might become an appropriation of funds based on future outlook of revenue, that month-by-month reassessment. Schools will not only be starting behind every other division in the region due to those other divisions finding ways to achieve level funding. They've somehow been able to achieve this. So we're already starting behind every other division in the region because of this. But any progress that we might see as a division in 2020 through 2021 will be frozen, effectively frozen, due to month-to-month uncertainty. So please consider that. Speaking to our funding partners, that I do know and I believe their heart is in the right place as they weigh and balance every financial decision for the public good, including that of our students and our families. Finally, I'll wrap this up. I just wanted to applaud Dr. Heron, your staff, your teachers, our teachers. I can't imagine all the work, all the stress that this has placed on you guys going through this pandemic, going through it, getting us through it. It's not been perfect, none of it's been ideal. But you guys have shown real grace through it all. And I just want to say that I recognize that. I believe we recognize this as a community. And we're so appreciative of you, Dr. Heron, your staff, and our teachers, and the leadership that you guys show. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have anything to add. I particularly appreciate Dr. Beers and Mr. Dowell's remarks and concur with them. Thank you. And I just especially want to thank the young people who called in today. It's always nice to hear from students. And thank you, Dr. Heron, to you and your team.
Thank you, Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel.
Thanks. We're approaching 10 o'clock, so I'm going to keep my remarks really, really brief, especially when everyone's been really very articulate prior to me. So thanks to everyone. I think our teachers, our staff, the central office, our superintendent, everyone has been working harder than ever to try to deal with the day-to-day challenges that we're all facing, and to do so, knowing that there's not going to be a raise at the end of the tunnel, but that there's just such uncertainty in the future. It makes it even more admirable to see all the miracles that are happening this semester for everyone. So I wanted to just say thanks to that. I also really want to put a plug in for the situation that our Board of Supervisors is in, since they do, you know, fund 90% of the local funding to see if there's any way possible, that we're not looking at a 10%, but we're looking at 5% or even level funding, knowing that all the challenges we're going to be facing. And I know they're facing challenges too. I just really, really agree with Dr. Beers. If there's ever a time for us to tap into emergency funds for our community, now is the time to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And I agree with each and every one of my school board colleagues. I think each one of our citizens for calling in and encourage folks to continue to stay engaged in this process. It's not a one-and-done. You need to continue to have a conversation with our funding partners, and it's, and it's a long-term conversation because we have not been adequately funded at all, at all levels, but particularly the state and the feds for a long, long time. And that has put our local funding partners And that has put our local funding partners in the bind that they are in. But because they fund the majority of our budget, it's to them that we need to look to. And so this is an opportunity for our community to let the city and the county know where, where they need to value and where they need to invest. And so I talked about patience at our last board meeting, and so I continue to ask the community to have patience. Nothing is perfect and it is every day a learning environment. My new motto is it's another COVID day. And so we're responding to, you know, a budget crisis and that's, that's one level of new opportunities and challenges. And then we still don't know what our social distancing guidelines will look like in the fall as well. And that's a whole nother level of opportunities and challenges that we'll need to respond to. So there are just a lot of uncertainty and we need to make sure that our students feel safe and loved and engaged and learning. And so we want to wrap up these last two weeks. So encourage families to continue to read your family newsletters. I know information's going out about collecting the laptops back up for the summer and when children can get their yearbox. And there's information out from guidance counselors about virtual Virginia and classes this summer. So just encourage people to stay engaged, go to our website. There's a lot of information on there to help families through this uncertain time. So with that, moving on to upcoming events. Item 12.1. We have, and Ms. Young spoke about this, the 21st Century Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow via Zoom, I guess to continue to work on their annual report to us. Policy Committee is meeting on the 28th at 8:00 AM via Zoom. Have we heard back from the Special Education Advisory Committee? I know that, I thought they were going to have a Zoom meeting or did have a Zoom meeting? Are they working on their annual report?
They're working on the annual report, but they have not been able to get a consensus together to have a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that hasn't been a forum. Yeah.
Right, thank you, Ms. Cook. And so then moving on to upcoming meetings, our next meeting is scheduled for June 16th. Hopefully, it could possibly be face-to-face and/or a combination of face-to-face and call-in. So that'll be to be, to be determined based on where we're at and what the governor says and what happens after June 10th. So with that, it is almost 10 o'clock on the dot. Unless there are additional comments or any final thoughts, I will adjourn this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.